Good evening, welcome. I'm calling to order the City Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, November 6th, 6:00 PM. Roll call, all councilors present. And if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge. Okay, moving on, item number four, city employee recognitions. Ms. Kane, you have four.
A certificate of appreciation was presented to the Garden Ridge Police Department in grateful recognition for their efforts to support Homes for Our Troops. A My Hero Award was presented to Officer Richard McMahon in appreciation for serving the community in the Garden Ridge Police Department. Jeremiah McKinney sent a thank you to City Council, the Wildlife Commissioners, Marissa Spencer, Cap Baubie, and myself for his enjoyable experience while being on the Wildlife Management Water Manager Jacob Parsons completed his 180-day probation on October 18th, 2019. Congratulations, Jacob. And we have two employees that we want to recognize their tenure service years with the City of Garden Ridge, and those employees are: Chief Eberhart for five-year service, and Public Works Director Stephen Steinmetz for 19 years of service.
Nineteen years. Thank you both for the five and 19 years of service. We really appreciate all you do for our city. Moving on, item number five, citizen comment period. The rules when you signed up, they were on the signup sheet, and I believe, I don't see a lot of new faces in here, but just a reminder that it's not an exchange. You're speaking to the council to be on the record, and the council will not be responding. We'll be taking notes and just listening to what you have to say. You have three minutes. Come up here, name and address does not count for your three minutes. The clock will start then. All right, first up, and you have to have signed up for this one now. There is a citizen comment period at the end that you do not have to have signed up for. So if you hear something during this meeting and you want to comment on it, you'll still have an opportunity at the end of the council meeting as well. So first up is number one, Tony Frasco.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the veterans throughout the country in Garden Ridge for all their service in keeping America, America, and thank you.
All right. Name and address, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tony Frasco, 8802 Wild Wind Park. I would like, there's an ordinance, 210-022018, which is the rules and regulations for the council. Section G, I wish some of the council would read this because it's supposed to be on social media, speaking about anything going on in the town. And there's another section, five, fair and impartial review. That's not just for the commission staff, plus the audience, because I've heard some snide remarks, which I don't really appreciate. Now, as far as it goes, you're going to put drinking fountains in, and I'm all for it, to have the kids have water and everything, but you cannot take those drinking fountains off that existing line that was just put in in Paul Davis Park. That's considered a contaminated line. There could be poisons, there could be animal waste, there could be a variety of things. So there's a chance that the drinking fountains will distribute contaminated water. This is state code, so you have to pull the water off prior to that backflow device. So just to make it known, we have to protect the kids and everybody using those fountains. So please do it right. Also, and I can't figure this out for the transparency, there was a House bill passed 2840, which means the public can speak by raising their hands. Now, you as a council and mayor have to put down what limits and what restrictions there are. I don't believe that you can use the same restrictions you're using now for that. You have to come up with new restrictions. So please, tell me why, or get to me, or get to the people, why since September 1st, 2019, we've only been allowed to get three minutes in and whatever, two minutes at the end, but if there's something coming up on the table, according to this legislation, we have a right to speak. So I would like to be addressed why for two months that we were not able to do this. This is not transparency, and I looked over this bill, and I can't find anything other than this. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Tristan Arvason.
Tristan Arvason, 20506 Back Haven Road. I came here tonight to do a checkup on my Eagle Scout project. I built a pocket park on Fairview Circle. It's mostly done, we're waiting on some boulders for a border. They should come in soon. I'd like to request with your permission that this park be named Eagle Scout Park because we had a vote at troop beating last Monday, and that was the highest voted for name. So I'm sure this will come up when the Parks Commission has their time, so as long as you can just keep that thought in your head and see what you think. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dave LaForge.
Dave LaForge, 21919 Costano Cove. My comments are related to water rates. I wrote the mayor in September that details of the metrics, methodology, data that's justifying the specific rates ought to be presented, or at least provided, to the public before any rate changes are voted on. Garden Ridge residents are pretty smart people. They know the details that are important to understanding these votes, and if they understand them, they can do better with that information. The mayor stated during the September 10th council meeting that he didn't pick up on the fact that the rates had gone up as much as they had, and that the rates were simply voted on based on an expert's advice. That means to me that the metrics, the methodology, and the data justifying the rate changes either weren't presented to the council or weren't understood by the council. I'd like to see those metrics. I'd like to see what's driving the rates. Likewise, managing personal water consumption is my family's responsibility, not the government. Don't directly link water rates with usage rates. Support for water conservation isn't solved or improved by increasing the water rates. I'm capable of deciding when and how to conserve. Besides, Garden Ridge has methodology in place, and it's a really good one, to encourage conservation through the drought management plan. Point is, there are more effective and more receptive ways to encourage rather than force conservation. As I said, Garden Ridge residents are smart people. Yeah, a lot of them are removed from the details to manage and lead the city. They don't necessarily come here for the meetings, but don't take them for granted. If the city can't provide the details behind any rate changes, then I recommend no vote until they are. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ken Kniper.
Ken Kniper, 8891 Shainthal Road. And I come to you tonight as a board member of the George Ranch Property Owners Association Board of Directors. On your agenda for tonight, you're going to, there is going to be discussion about trapping the feral hogs using the current trapper that we are using for the deer. I highly recommend it, because there is a place to put it, right where the pin is at now. We have found, looking at game cameras, that those hogs have been trapped before, at least two of the older ones, so they know what to do. They keep the younger ones away, but they will not know what to do with this one because it'd be camera-controlled, and it'll be up, and it'll drop on them, and then the DPD will be notified right away to come and take care of the hogs, so they don't destroy their pins. Because those hogs are strong, and they're destructible. So they are very, if they can pull up a fence and pick it up, unless you bury it three foot down, trust me, they can do a lot of damage to any pin. I've seen what they've done to big corral pins at SARA, San Antonio River Authority, when I went to a Saturday conference with them, or seminar. So then these hogs are smart. Trust me, I know. Pigs are not the dumbest animals in the world. The dumbest ones are the deer, because they will go right to feed. These hogs are staying away from the feed, they're staying away from the feeders. They're not going in the pins. And if they're smart enough, they can push the pin in and then go eat what's out there, they will do that, and then release it, and they go a little bit further. They keep pushing the pin in if they can. So these hogs are very intelligent animals, and they are very smart. So please allow whatever period of time you think is reasonable. In the last three weeks, since we've gotten rain and the weather's gotten cooler, the hog attacks and yard attacks, I should say, by the hogs in George Ranch have gone down to none. We've not had any reports. And the only reason I know that is I was getting a lot of emails daily when they were active, because I'm the point of contact with the city to deal with them, both with Animal Control and now with Mr. Steinmetz. And the support we have gotten from the city has been outstanding, and I would like to thank then those two gentlemen very much, and everybody with the city who has helped us with this problem. So please, if it comes up, and you're going to vote for it, please vote in favor of it, because I think it'll help control the feral hog problem we've got. We need to get rid of at least the small groups, and there's maybe one or two small batches in there. Get rid of those, and the others will not come back. They'll stay away. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, item number six, consent agenda. Counsel, remind you that in the interest of trying to keep these meetings from going until midnight, a few more things are being put into consent agenda, but you'll be getting these things well ahead of time, and it's always public, the packages are public, the decisions are public, so it's not like we're trying to not talk about things in public. You always have the trump card to say literally weeks prior that you want something not in the consent agenda, but in a business item. But if they're relatively mundane or routine things, I'm going to continue to try to put them into consent agenda to move the meeting along. So that said, there are a number of things in consent agenda. I'd like to see if anybody needs any of them pulled, or if I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve items on the current consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda from place five.
I second.
Can I get a second? Second from place three. Any further discussion or questions? Have some doubt, all in favor of the consent agenda as published, being approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to staff reports, item number seven, city administrator, you have four.
The only thing that I would like to add to my report to City Council is that we are trying to promote electronic water billing. Out of approximately 1,700 water bill accounts, we've had 130 residents sign up for the electronic We encourage people to sign up on the registration form, provide the information necessary to get the electronic water bills to them. And I believe that the ladies have placed some forms on the table over here to the side where they have the agendas, so that they're available. And that's all I had to add to my report.
Thank you, ma'am. And before I go through council, I just want to add to that, that please, if you haven't done it, do it, and talk it up. It's not only a better system for the city and to save on some labor as well as postage, but it's actually better for the individual. It's more secure, you don't have your personal information sitting in mailboxes and sitting in envelopes. Instead, it's just sent directly to you. And you get it, you get it right away, and you have plenty of time to act on a bill that you have a problem with or something like that. It actually is quicker than if you get it in an envelope. And we, I'll tell you that as we implement this, we'll be adding links to grapevine and schedules, you know, the calendar, to make sure that people still are getting the kind of information that they get as they receive this in the mail. So questions, comments on city administrators' monthly activity reports, starting on right side?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kane. Next up is Police Department Chief.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things I'd like to add. Bulk of the information is up there. However, there are three other items, additional items, I'd like to speak a little bit more on, if we could put the first one up. We were invited to attend and assist the Bracken United Methodist Church recently. They had their Community Help Week, and they wanted officers from us to come out and talk to the children about community helping and so forth. So over a two-day period, four officers went out there and spoke and worked with about 350 children. And so that was, they have a very large daycare out there and children, so they were appreciative and took this picture and framed it and sent it back to us, so I thought that was very interesting. Although they technically are not in our city, we do consider them part of our community as they, many of the members of that church live here in Garden Ridge, so I wanted that brought up. Also, you heard just a minute ago from our scout, we have completed the Fairview Park to the point where it can be considered a park. I've had the city engineers draw up a new map with the thousand-foot rule on that, so we have an additional park now covering another additional area, and I wanted to bring that up and show you that we do have everything up to date on the webpage and available. Since it was an Eagle Scout project, we wanted to bring that up to y'all here in a public meeting. And last but not least, you'll see some of us are looking a little scruffy right now. We have decided to participate in the No Shave November to bring awareness to cancer, mainly prostate colon cancer this month. So officers will be wearing a little blue lapel pin over their name tag and indicates that they are participating and have contributed at least $50 to a cancer research or cancer-giving organization here locally. And that is all I have at this point, sir.
Thanks, sir. Did you want to talk about the retirement?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did forget one other thing. It was just announced today, actually officially, that Detective Spiller has announced his retirement, so he will be retiring the first week of January. So we wish him the best, and I wanted y'all to be first to get that news. So he will be leaving us shortly.
Thank you, Chief. And questions or comments on the police report, starting on left side? Mike?
I look forward to the party, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, I did have something else and it went out my brain, so, sorry.
Sir?
There's some kind of cleanly shaven faces sitting up front here at the dais as well. Some of us are maybe a little furrier than others, but I'd be willing to join in on No Shave November.
You already don't shave.
Makes it easy for me, doesn't it? That's all I got.
Over on this side. Thank you, Chief. Next up is Public Works, Mr. Steinmetz.
Good evening. We recently received our new crack seal machine, trailer-mounted, and Bobcat Miller attachment for being able to quickly do road repairs more efficiently. We provided playgrounds material and other types of border for the new Fairview Park setup. And we have, currently we have not caught any hogs as to date. Last we've seen any come to the traps were the 27th of October. That's all I have.
On the right side, questions for Mr. Steinmetz, Public Works?
No.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, please. Under future projects or needs, sir, I know we have two items there. I know in the past six or so months ago, I believe, we discussed potentially creating a roof for our vehicles. We have, I don't see that on here.
Well, that's kind of part of it. We're considering all options when we're looking, we're actually looking at putting more office space up there, so we're actually building that around also, going to put that in the cost.
Okay.
For possible upgrades.
Okay. So it's really part of that, maybe, maybe you could state that next time as a consideration? That's all.
Yes, we're looking at it.
Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Water Department, Mr. Parsons.
Good evening. Okay, so as you noticed in your packet, we have used a lot of Edwards water. We're actually getting down to where we've shut off the Edwards, the 2252 wells, so we're not using, pulling any more water from that aquifer. We're actually using Trinity, and we're just on Trinity. So I wanted to point that out. Secondly, we had some leaks that we had, the big one was a fire hydrant on Golden Rod Circle, and I just wanted to make you guys aware that it was a leak that we estimated about a 48,000 gallons, that when it broke, it was leaked out. It was contained rather quickly, and we got it back, and it's actually back in the ground working and operating. Also, we've had a lot, as you know, we've had a lot of water leak adjustments, water leak adjustment requests, and we have gone through a lot of them. It's taking a long time. It takes at a minimum about two hours to go from start to finish for a water leak adjustment. So far, we've gone through 38 of them. We're waiting for some information on some of them. Six of them have been approved. Seven of them have been sent to the Water Commission. So, and that's where we are standing right now when I put this form in. We've actually been doing a lot of work, and every week we do more and more, so. We've also had meter flow tests. These are filled meter tests where we go to the house, someone complains or is questioning the meter, the accuracy of the meter. We go ahead and put a different style and type of meter, and we run a 10-gallon water test through it, and we are finding that the accuracy, we have not found any thus far that have been inaccurate or that would need to be subject or sent to a third party. We have had a few that have requested to be sent to a third party this week, so we'll be doing that. Other than that, we have laptop readings, so these are requests from our customers that say, hey, something's going on, I don't know what's going on with my water, can you come out and look at that? So we'll go out and take a laptop reading, which gives us an hour, hour by hour, to look of what's going on, and I'm sure some of you are aware of these, some of you may not be, but what we're finding is irrigation use, potential irrigation use, potential leaks, and different things, and if it's pretty evident, we're able to orient the water leak adjustment based on this. And this was all from the Water Commission when they sent it to us. That being said, we have done this month 89. Last month, we did 122. So there's a lot of work going into finding out what's going on with the meters and leaks and leak adjustments. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. I want to go back to something you talked about, and to be clear, it wasn't a leak from a hydrant. It was a hit-and-run with a car that took out the hydrant, and then they decided to leave. And I'd like to turn it over to the chief, because we're still investigating this. Go ahead, Chief.
We are, sir. We don't want to release a lot of information on that. However, if anybody has any, what we had was, at the end of the cul-de-sac there, it just so happened it worked out that both of those residents were out of town, and the house was being looked upon, looked after by relatives and friends. We had two of those individuals contact us and say they heard something and didn't report anything until they were leaving and saw the water flowing down the street and through the yard. So if anybody has any information on that, we're asking them to come forward. We've posted it, but at this point, that is still under investigation, so we are still working that case.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else?
I just want to mention that Brad Oliveri, he's the water deputy, he actually obtained his backflow assembly licenses, which we're really proud of him for doing. So if you see him, tell him congratulations, please.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Starting over on the left side, questions for Water Manager?
No, sir, thanks.
How about compliments? I got a phone call yesterday from a good friend of mine. I won't use his name because he didn't want me to, but he complimented you on your professionalism in handling this water rate issue and the meters and everything else. And he's not somebody that would typically call up and compliment, so I didn't get it in in time to get it into Nancy, but I can do it right here now and right in front of you, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am, sir? Thank you very much. Next up, Library. Ms. Crossland.
Good evening. Very quick report on our first-ever trunk-or-treat. I put down in the report we had 400 people. That was a very conservative estimate, because we didn't start counting till about 5:20. Our counter didn't count all the people who had trunks, and they didn't count the police, or quite a few people, so it was well over 400, and it was cold, but we had a great time. Thank you, police, for helping park and helping get voters to come and vote. I encourage people to come. Thank you, Public Works, for helping us get set up. I am wearing my red, white, and blue flag scarf as a reminder that this Friday, day after tomorrow, at 10:30 a.m. in this room, we will be celebrating our Veterans Day tribute. This is just a wonderful thing. I hope all veterans can come and let us just say thank you. In the back, there's a little flower pot, and I have a list there of everyone. We put up a big display over here with people's names, and their names is on a star. It's our wall of honor. And so back there, I have people listed if I already have your name on a star. If your name is not there, please write your name down, and also, anyone who can send a picture, a photo of yourself in uniform to the library. And also, anyone who can send a picture, a photo of yourself in uniform to the library, it will be on a slideshow that will be going when people come in. Any questions?
On the right side, any questions for Ms. Crossland? Yeah, trunk or treat, great. And I'll just echo, please, 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 don't assume that the folks that you know know about the Veterans Day tribute that we do in here. Make sure they know. Tell everybody that you know about this. And by the way, it's not just for veterans, it's for people to come in to celebrate that. So you don't have to be a veteran to be in here for that.
And spouses, we want to honor spouses, but, and then people who just want to say thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much, Linda. Next up is item number eight, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Got our report, briefly run through it. Wanted to introduce Colin Brewer, one of our young engineers here with me tonight. Does a lot of work with the city on various projects. 2252, again, no action this month, but we anticipate a January meeting with TechDOT where they're supposed to have 50% design plans. We anticipate some possible utility conflicts and we're eager to get those plans. As we understand it right now, the, any conflicts that we may run into, because there are easements where we anticipate those, would be covered by TechDOT and they're not, wouldn't be a city expense. 2252, water, wastewater. We're continuing to talk to landowners in the area and look at possible development and utility needs, planning those projects. Woods and Garden Ridge, Benzel Road, the revegetation is still pending. The recent rains have been quite helpful, but we're still waiting on final growth. The recent rains eliminated some of the past residential flooding issues we've had downstream. So I think that was successful. Plaza Oaks Waterline, work continues on that. They have passed pressure tests and back tea tests, but there's quite a bit of cleanup and quite a bit of work that needs to be done to complete that project. So we're continuing to monitor that. City Transportation Master Plan, that has been completed and it's under review by city staff. Blackwell Office Building, we've been exchanging comments with their architect and engineer. We've got reply comments. We've addressed, we're addressing those, reviewing those and continuing to work on that project to move it forward. Northeast Bible Church, we've got plans on that and we're reviewing that. Particular attention to the drainage for that site. And we'll be getting them comments back and expect there'll be some resumé required to address those issues. 2019, the GIS and Water Model Study, we're finishing up that and hope to have a meeting with city staff here in the next couple of weeks to address that and bring that up and up to date and continuing preparing the master plan for that project. Zoning map, just an update to the zoning maps to reflect current zoning throughout the city and as aid for city staff to refer to for planning. You saw the city park, Safe Zone, Child Zone, just updated that as well. I'm happy to answer any questions, providing additional information.
Thank you, sir. Starting left side, questions for City Engineer?
No, I don't believe so.
Sure.
Sure.
Can you give us more of an exact status on the Blackwell Office Building?
Yes, sir.
What the slow up is and how long do you think it'll be before it gets rectified?
We received plans in late February. We responded on the 7th of October to those plans. There are a number of deficiencies, additional information that was necessary. They responded with additional documentation on the 24th. The main issues were a lack of engineering calculations and other information to be provided so we can evaluate. It's not the city engineer's job to design the project. We received that information on the 24th and we're repairing a response letter. A lot of the information is still not fully adequate. We're, a response that it's done this way in another city. It's not, doesn't apply to Garden Ridge and specific requirements and how things are done. So we're trying to make it as complete as possible to get a complete response and get back to them. And I have not heard from the project manager or the owner, but be happy to meet with them and address those issues.
Yes, good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other thing, the zoning, are we going to have any residential zoning classification in the city? Or are you just dealing with the zoning along 30009, 2252?
No, this is more of a historic zoning. Cities had zoning maps in the past, but with changes in parcels and plaits, just an update to make sure that it's properly reflected. It's not, we're not changing city zoning requirements.
We don't have any zoning in the city right now, so other, along the main highway. So it's, it was, it struck me when I first moved to this area because that's what I, you know, that's part of the research I do of my business. We don't have a zoning code in Garden Ridge for residential. I just wondered if that was ever going to take place. Not that it makes a darn bit of difference.
Okay, sorry.
Great questions. Anything else? Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. La. Number nine, City Commission Committee Reports, Recommendations, Possible Actions. Item A is Planning and Zoning. Did not have a meeting since the last time we met, but I'll turn it to Dr. Miller if he's got something on something to counsel on.
I had nothing to add to what you just said. We canceled both meetings in October. We're looking forward to a meeting on the 12th of November, at which time we're expecting a representative of Freeze Nichols, Chase Sparks, to come and update us on three main areas that we had trouble with in the other ordinance. I think it was short-term rentals, accessory buildings and accessory structures. Is that it, Ms. Kane? Those three things in particular. But we plan to ask some other questions about where we are as a workaround for the legislative changes that kind of drove us to, excuse me, ground us to a halt. That's all I had for planning and zoning.
Thanks, sir. And any questions from counsel for planning and zoning? Chair, start with the right side. Ma'am?
Yes, I'd just like to expand, please, on what Dr. Miller said. The purpose of this next meeting Tuesday evening, which is 6 o'clock here, is again for Mr. Sparks' chance, Sparks, to address specifically the three key issues that have been the most significant issues for Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think it'd be a super idea if all of us who could attend, could attend. It would not be a special council meeting, it would not be a forum for planning and zoning, I'm sorry, for planning and zoning and council to interact. Just be a set, more sets of ears so that when the whole project comes before us, especially those of us who are sort of on the second tier of the project, I just think it would be very helpful. Again, it would not be a question and answer. They'd be more or less silent in the back, but I think it'd really give you a better feel for what the commissioners, their primary concerns. Because this has gone on, as you know, a long time. Thank you.
That's Tuesday?
Thank you, Councilwoman Bauer. Moving on to Corey. Corey did not have a meeting and I don't know if anybody from Corey is here. So we'll move on to item C, Water Commission, Recommendations, Possible Action. Turn it over to Chairman Valdez. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. First item on the agenda is filling the position of Water Commission Place Two. Water Commission actually received four self-nominations, which we're very happy that we received that many. Unfortunately, two were, it's going to make it challenging with four. Anyway, one candidate pulled his name right prior to the meeting for personal reasons. Same thing with the second candidate, was not able to attend the meeting. We did interview two candidates. Both offered unique experiences and did a great job in answering our questions. At this point, the commission recommends the appointment of Dr. Richard Carmichael. He's sitting back here. He's standing up, so you can see who he is. Thank you. We recommend appointing Dr. Richard Carmichael to the Water Commission Place Two. Term expiring September 30th, 2021. Dr. Carmichael has a PhD in civil engineering and is a registered and licensed professional engineer in Texas. He has served in the U.S. Air Force and has many various work experience, including work with Texas Commission Environmental Quality, TECQ. So we're, we're also asking, he's only lived in the city five months. We're asking for a waiver to the residency requirement under Res Orange 210. So I'd like to counsel to consider maybe delaying his appointment to December to avoid having that waiver. So I turn it over back to you, counsel. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. And yeah, so I'm going to intervene here and tell you that we are very fortunate to have Dr. Carmichael having applied and agreed to serve with the PE and all of his breadth and depth of experience. What I'm gonna, and what you got was our chair bringing to you what the commission recommended. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend to you to also consider that you approve it as of December 6th. December 6th is when Dr. Carmichael will have been here for six months. And I, you know, when we, when we consider variances and when we consider waivers and things like that, we have to consider that there's supposed to be cases that it really needs to happen. And in this case, what will happen is if you approve it by, for the December 6th, he can attend the next month meeting, the next meeting they have in the audience and start to see what's going on and be, get up to speed. But that way, we don't have to, we don't have to engage in waivers and you can just approve them as of the 6th. That's something to consider. It's your, it's your decision, it's your call. But I just wanted to explain a little bit of what Chair Valdez was just talking about. So that said, looking for a motion to act on Dr. Carmichael's Water Commission Place Two.
I move to approve Dr. Carmichael's, the recommendation of the commission to approve Dr. Carmichael beginning December 6th. And I welcome him and hope that he will be able to attend the November meeting and then be sworn in or whatever.
Thank you. From Place Five, I have a motion to approve as of December 6th for Dr. Carmichael into Place Two. Can I get a second?
Second.
You think, you think they think you're there? Who had their mic on? All right, so Place One had his mic on, we'll say Place One has the second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Again, Dr. Carmichael, thank you very much for getting involved and we look forward to you being on the Water Commission and bringing your experience to, and expertise to the commission. Thanks. Welcome. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman Valdez.
Before going to the next item, I wanted to thank Mr. French, Mr. Beer, and then Mr. Diaz for also showing interest in serving the commission and encouraging them to continue to support the city. So maybe they can be available for some other commissions as well. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the water rate structure, so. Okay, as you know, we've been talking about water rates for a while now. It needs to happen. We, we have a dire need to be sure we made our requirements. You have a packet and we'll cover some background. This is the information I'm going to cover. Background, I'm going to cover the data we actually use, assumptions made in the data, the water rate options that the commission came up with, and look at the way we made our decisions based on alternatives and criteria around processing decisions. And then I'll present the Water Commission recommendations as well. So again, the Water Commission had a subcommittee of two people. Our co-chair, Harshberger, myself, met with city staff to review and understand the water markets model. Something we really didn't do the first time, really go through, look at what was in the format. And so we spent a lot of time and we thank city administrator Nancy Kane for her work and her staff as well. Kat, Denise, Jacob, and especially I have to, Karen Ford. She really was very helpful in providing the financial information. Couldn't have done this without her. Sorry, Marissa, we left you out. Like I said, in your packet, you receive the detailed report that we had developed for y'all. Everything I'm going to cover is more on the data, based on a question I received from Councilwoman Swent about really where the data came from. So that's why I changed the presentation here to really, all, everything's in your report. I'm just going to show it in a different format. Okay, so again, so again, this presentation is just covering the data. Here's the inputs that go into the model. Our monthly consumption, water consumption for the fiscal year 2019. Look at the number of accounts, what the percent growth assumptions. Look at our debt, our water fund expenses, what we need to have in our reserves, and then the rate structure. Okay, so here, this is a copy from, directly from the sheet. And I have, I want to show in the first column, fiscal year 2018. These are the numbers for inside city limits and outside city limits. So it's the middle column that water markets used. The column on the right is fiscal year 2019. This new data that we obtained knows that the consumption went down. This is per month, so in inside the city limits, we're 2 million gallons per month. So we had less consumption this past year. 28 million gallons of the whole year versus 2018. So again, that's data that affects the calculations. Number of accounts. We've had 23 meters inside the city. We're at it in 2019. We went down one meter outside the city limits in this last year. Water markets use a 2% growth number. But, so we feel like the model was over predicting the growth since we're almost at built-out conditions. We only have the woods that has current, you know, permits to build houses at this point. After that, it's going to slow down. So we changed that growth rate to half a percent. The growth rate outside, we went from 2% down to zero. Again, we don't see much growth going out past that. And then we have, we don't know the non-residential growth on 2252 is uncertain at this time. So we took, we didn't take that into a factor for this coming year. As far as our debt, so Karen provided this information. So this is the amount of funds that we owe per year. The middle column is what actually is current debt. It's around 600,000 plus per year. We have projects that have been approved for CIP but have not been funded yet. So we don't include anything for 2020. We did add some funds looking ahead. And we just did a basic 30-year equally, you know, amortization table. We came added $230,000 per year for debt to look ahead after 2021. But for this coming year, we didn't, we don't have any additional debt just because we don't have anything funded at this time. So this has come directly from our budget. The water fund expenses approved in our budget, these are the 11 categories we have. You'll have a fiscal year 2020 budget, those numbers. That total is 1,76,000. We estimate, or growth is estimated to, for 2021, which is almost 3.27% increase for that. So we use those numbers to look at the next two years based on that. The model actually requires us to enter 2019 data. So it throws us off, so we actually have to make the model work so that the 2020 budget numbers and 2021 come out the way we want them here. And they did, once we saw where they went. As far as the reserve, our reserve fund balance was at just a little under 1.5 million as of August 31st this year. Now, reserve funds are used to manage fluctuations in revenue, you know, to sustain the water fund during low cash flow period. fund during low cash flow periods and for any unforeseen expenses. So the first eight or nine months of the fiscal year, we're actually using, borrowing money from that fund to pay our expenses. You know, it's later in the year that we actually have the peak income to balance out the year, so we're, we're borrowing from that money, we need that money to use. The reserve fund covers a 12-month debt, so be sure we can pay that in the next 12 months. And we're only using nine months operating expenses at this time. We set our minimum reserve in the spreadsheet at 1.5 million for 2020. Now, we have a goal to bring that operating expense up to 12 months, increase the reserve fund up to 2 million. So how we did that, we used over a 10-year period, increased it 25,000 per year over a 10-year period in the calculations. Okay? So, well, hit the wrong button. This is all the data that we put in. Any questions at this point? And continue, you know?
Left side, anything?
Okay, like I said, everything's in the packet you had already, and this is just in a different format to show you the actual numbers. I thought it'd be easier to explain. So the commission looked at four options, and we'll call the first one the city council option, that is the way we were charged at the September 10th meeting to look at, and I'll cover more in detail what that meant. Option two was a uniform percent increase, percent, you know, across all tiers. Number three was added commercial rates. We have potential commercial growth coming in 20, in, off 202252 per our master land plan use, so that's a little bit longer term to look out there. And option four was doing another option, which was just implementing water markets proposal year one and year two recommendations, and I'll show you, explain a little bit more about those. We used, we have to find a way to score how each one of these came out. And so we looked at six different criteria and rated it one to five, looked at the impact on low-volume users, delayed the increase to middle-volume users, minimize the financial risk to the water company, revenue stability, look at equality, you know, share increase across all residents, all users, how does it have with respect to conservation incentives, and then an economic efficiency. As the Water Commission was going through the alternatives in our meeting, the commissioners really looked at financial risk and equality as needing to look at it a little bit closer, so we added, we actually multiplied that value by two. So we have a base score, and then we have a weighted score for each one. Okay, so the one referring to city council option is retain the $2 increase on the base rate. Leave, so look at the water market year one and year two rates. We would leave tiers one through three and eight and above unchanged from water markets. We would increase tiers four through seven, but at a lower graduated rate. And then we looked at, looking at 3% increase from 22, from fiscal year 2022 and beyond. Okay? And here's the way we scored it. So in your packet, you have the detailed charts between here and there, you know, you see the detailed charts of what the actual numbers was. I just wanted to get to the, show the options here, and this is how we scored it. And so, you know, this has rated a five for impact on the low-volume users, a five for, again, low impact of tiers four through seven. The financial risk, it did have a greater risk, so we put a three at this one because it is demand sensitive. For conservation incentive, we put it as a four just because it does decrease, it decreases the mid-volume users lower, but it provides the incentive for the higher-rate users. And then the economic efficiency, it's based on the lower tiers pay a lower amount of the, of the peak cost, so a three there. So again, so we had the original score of 21, the weighted score 25, we doubled the financial risk and equality there. Moving on to option number two, this is a uniform, same percent increase across all tiers. This one did, so for the year 2020, we left the 25 for the base rate, it will require to go to 26 in 2021. Again, that's just looking ahead, estimating, it's just an estimate. Our calculations showed that we needed a 14% across the board for 2020, and looked possibly based on what we estimate for the budget for 2021, that we need to increase that another 16% in 2021. And here's how it's scored. Again, this one has on impact to low-volume users, rate is a one, because it does impact the lower tier users. Again, it does impact the middle-tier users a little bit more, so it's a three. It's a five for financial risk in that it's not demand sensitive like the rest of them are. So I got a score of 10 when you weighted it. For equality, we treat everybody the same, so again, a five. It currently maintains the same incentives we have now, so it's a three for conservation incentives, sensitivity, I mean, and a two for economic efficiency. Low, base and lower tiers pay the, increase their share of peak loads. So the base score is 19, the weighted score is 29. Option three was to look, we looked at commercial rates. We looked at, and all we did was take non-residentials, non-government users, and moved them over a simple way, move them over to the outside sea limit rates. You know, and you could actually get away with just reducing the, all residentials to 9% in 2020. The problem is, we don't, we don't have enough data at this point to move on. We don't know what it's gonna be, so at this point, the Water Commission is proposing we delay this option as we get more information, as we be able to predict a study comparing how other cities treat commercial rates, so we're not ready to move on to this one, but I want to show that this is an option that we want to consider later on. And here's a score here, I'm not gonna go through the details of it, but since we were delaying that one. The, stick with the water markets, year one and year two. So everything's the same. The third burger, that's the one I want to point out, is this is not revenue neutral in that once we change all the data to update to 2019 usage and all the, and the budget for next year, we actually exceed our expenses by 64,000. We actually have a net gain of 64,000, so it's not revenue neutral. To make it revenue neutral, we essentially go back to option one. Okay? So I just want to show you how, what do you have to do to this one, what we have now to make it revenue neutral. Okay, so here the score is 19 for not weighted, 22 for weighted. And here it has a summary. Option one, rates higher when you don't weigh it. Option two, rates comes out higher when you do, do the weighted score ratio. We feel, the commission felt like options one and two were the most viable solution at this point. Like I said, we want option three, the commercial rates, is something that we need to consider, but it's gonna take some more work and more study. And option four is not, not revenue neutral, so that was rejected alternative. The following charts is only gonna look at options one and two to give you more of a comparison, to help you decide. We'll give you our recommendation, but again, it's your, you can pick either one. The first chart here just shows the rates for, I show for current, option one and option two, and this just gives you a percent increase in the, in the red column. Okay, just study those. Again, the option two is a straight 14% across each tier. Option one, it's 0% increase for the first three tiers, and it goes up gradually, but you're at 97% increase when you go to above 95,000 gallons. This actually would be the bill, so what does actually consumer you see on his monthly bill? So we got the current, every 5,000 gallons, got the option one, every 5,000, and option two. Later on, I'll show you what the delta is between each, between the difference are, so it's in the last slide. Should have put it right next. But I wanted to do a graph here to show how the two go up with time, so you got the, on the X, X axis is the number of gallons actually consumed versus the dollars that actually If you notice, that's 70,000 gallons roughly. Below that, option one is below option two. So I want to highlight that a little bit more and expand that to show you a little bit different, just to visually show you how that is. Even the option two is a little bit higher, it's not significant, but we still get to the same point. And then the last chart here is what, again, in the red, I had, I put in there what the increase from current is, and then the difference between option one and two is the last column. I know I covered that pretty quick. So the Water Commission voted on this, and Water Commission recommends option two, just a straight 14% increase this year, but also recommends, a second recommendation is to adopt an annual review process. Now that we have the model, we know how to use it, we can take the usage data for this next year, we'll take the budget for 2020 and relook at all, all the numbers again. It's not like we're gonna raise the rates, X numbers every year, we're gonna look at it every year as our proposal. That way, we stay on top of it. We don't want to wait five years like, you know, was done in the past. So at this point, I guess I can turn it over for any questions?
Great job. Thank you, thank you very much. I'd like to turn it over to council for any questions, and again, the option two is what they're recommending 14% across. Now, I want to tell you that there's two recommendations, and they're separate, they're separate motions, separate votes, you see on your agenda, that's, we split them out. So just, we'll talk about recommendation number one first, which is what you, as a council, believe the rates should be based on the data. I'll also tell you that, consider that the comment of now we have the model, we have the model, when we, when we engaged with water markets, we had the model, but we weren't very smart about how to use it. And now we got two people sitting there that are very smart about how to use it, and that's what you see the product here. So water markets, you know, it's, it's whatever data they have, whatever data we gave them, but a year later, we have more data, and we have, so the, the Water Commission and particularly this subcommittee had more fidelity and more data to be able to, to make this, to do this analysis. So that said, start over on the left side. Comments and questions to the Water Commission on their recommendations and their analyses?
First of all, Jesse, I think you're in your element. This is wonderful presentation.
Well.
Well, both of you. If I may, I understand option two, the recommendation and so on. Did you discuss, I know in the past, we've discussed essentially, despite what's been said by citizens tonight and previous meetings, that, you know, we, we all want to hope that we know how to conserve, and we all attempt to conserve, but there are people who don't choose to conserve. And did you consider that 14% across the board, you know, is, I mean, the people that just say, I don't care, and I'm gonna use 200,000 gallons a month? I mean, should they be essentially paying, they're gonna pay more money, but should they be paying at the same rate?
Well, I mean, we're adding the 14%, but that 14% is a higher dollar value, like I showed you on the other previous one here, you know? Even the 14% at 100,000 gallons is additional $200, you know, per the monthly bill. It's not the 500 or 600 that they would have been in the other one, or it would have been 340, four the other way. So we are, still may be an increase. Now, we, the reaction that we felt that happened in September was people started going to come back, cutting back on their usage. We already saw in 2019, they cut back, and think they're gonna increase. Well, the commission is planning on doing some, discussing about conservation classes or educational sessions that we're planning on doing for that to help them out as well. So it could have been a big impact on this in the future as far as, but you're right, there are gonna be some users that are still gonna spend the money. So, but that was the way, we still offered the two options.
Okay. Katie?
You want to answer?
Sure. Okay, first question, was there, it kind of goes along with what Councilman Bauer said, was there any discussion about, let's say we go into a heavy drought stage, having a rate increase as the tiers go up? I know that's kind of a slippery slope to go down, but I'm just curious if there's any discussion about it.
No, no, there was. I'm, I understand the question. Can you refer, I'm not sure I understood the question.
In the past, and maybe I missed something here, in the past, we, you know, if you went into drought stage X, it was a surcharge on top when you used over X amount of gallons of water. Was that discussed at all here? We're just gonna do?
We didn't, we're not changing that, that at all. We didn't, that's a different ordinance, I believe.
Okay.
So we're not looking at that ones, yeah.
And then at first blush, I went 14% seems like kind of high, we're sort of punishing the low-end users, and then my brain went, you know, we haven't had a rate increase in how many years?
Five years.
Okay. What's been the inflation rate over those five years? Couple of percent per year?
If you looked at a 3% over year over year, we'd be at 16% this year.
Yeah. So then it makes sense if you look at it from that perspective. My first blush was 14%, that's too much. Well, except we haven't changed it for five years, which is why we risk running into a revenue hole if we don't increase it, so, okay. I like it.
Mr. Valdez, very well explained. I don't know where you got all these graphics and all that, but it took a lot of work to get that together. What is the fear or the concern, y'all's concern about the, being revenue neutral?
Go ahead, you want to try to?
So, yeah, the way the, the way the model is set up, you put in all those expenses and debt, and everything is in there to start with. And so the goal, since the city water company is trying to provide the service and cover costs, is not to profit from it, it's just to make sure we cover expenses to include those future capital outlays that are necessary for the system. So we felt, given the charge that the council gave us, that our going-in target should be to make sure the model comes out as close to revenue neutral as possible, meaning that our expenses are gonna be covered by our revenues. We did define revenue neutral, though, as being within 2% of the estimate, because there's a lot of fluctuation in there from year to year. So we wanted to have a projection that was no less than zero, break even, but no more than a 2% above estimates. So there, there is a, it's about $20,000 delta in there, so there's a little bit of wiggle room, but we felt that we needed to try to rebuild a little bit of confidence in the process as well. So we just wanted to emphasize that our whole going in was revenue neutral, but that doesn't mean we're not covering our expenses, all right? We're just not targeting additional income.
We, we do have a 25,000 per year increase to, you know, increase our reserves, though. So we're still adding 25,000 to the reserve every year. That's in there already.
Okay, well personally, I don't have any, any, any problems with the water company making money. Let's take this, and it was already mentioned, take this to the extreme. Let's say the, we go into a severe drought, a five, 10-year drought, we have the Trinity aquifer is playing out, we have to buy massive amount of water for the Edwards. Having a good, good-sized cushion in there would be, I think, very helpful. And I don't see, I don't think, see a thing wrong with, you know, increasing or, or taking that money and setting aside for, for, for something we don't foresee.
Well, we don't either, I don't want to imply that, but the Edwards and Trinity fees are essentially pass-throughs, so we pulled those out of the model, so they're not counted twice. So there is still the ability through that, that particular part of the, of the bill to cover those additional costs if they arise. But secondly, we also wanted to focus only on this year. So the problem we were trying to solve is what do we need for the rates now? All that can be adjusted in an annual review process. And that, that's really the bottom line. We don't have a problem with it either, we just didn't know how to quantify that, you know, what is a reasonable amount? So the model that we're showing was based upon the assumption of, let's keep everything Doesn't mean it can't be, you know, adjusted, but for right now, that, those Doesn't mean it can't be, you know, adjusted, but for right now, that, those two options provide you the same income. Now, we did have a lot of discussion and concern. One of the charges was to, you know, adjust the mid-tier but not affect the lower tiers. Option two does affect the lower tiers far more substantially. There's a lot of reasons not to do that. But if you look back at the volume consumption data, you'll find that, yes, we, we consumed 2 million gallons less a month, but if you look at the higher volume tiers, they went up. So that reflects the lack of restrictions, right? We removed the, the restrictions and said, you know, if you pay for your water, you can use your water. So those upper tiers are kind of, are highly demand-sensitive. When people, when the price goes up, they can cut down how much they use or vice versa. So since the goal was to make sure the water company was funded and we were focused only on next year, we did not emphasize that, because we didn't want the, since there's already been a 2 million gallon decrease, we didn't want to take a chance on, on being below targets for next year. So I do want to, I guess we want to emphasize our recommendation is, this is a one-year recommendation. The model provides those out-year projections, but it's going to have to be relooked at with more data as time goes forward.
One thing I want to add is that the water markets, what their rates were based on the data they had, when we say revenue neutral, they were $11,000, and we're in the same range with our numbers, based on the new data that we inputted this year. So we're still following the same process that water markets did. The difference in that option four, using the water market rates, is that our new data gives us that, increases that by $50,000 revenue increase, the difference, is the explanation there. So our new data is, is what makes the difference.
Okay, so council's going to be taking a look at this and y'all, every year, and we're going to be loading on increases?
Yeah, the Water Commission.
Or changes in our, our options here?
We can, we can do it different ways, yeah.
And all that will be modified, it's like a living document that.
It'd be a living, yes, sir.
We may have an option five next year.
Could be.
Or three, only three, okay.
I already want to look at.
Very, very well done.
Commercial part as well, you know.
Councilwoman Swin?
Just a big thank you. I watched the Water Commission meeting, and you guys are very thorough, I appreciate all the work you put into it. I've probably picked Jesse's brain to death, so I, I certainly don't have any questions. I've, I've looked at all of this, and this is great work. Thank you.
Ditto Lisa on thanks. This is quite a project. Matter of fact, it was a whole lot of fun reading it over a few dozen times, trying to figure out what was going on.
Number's guy.
Seriously, the, I had, one of my reservations was the 14% increase at the low level, and because one thing that we didn't want to do was increase those that did conserve and, and wanted, you know, didn't, didn't want to do, use a whole lot of water. Thing bad is, after you run a few numbers, like at the 30,000 level, it's an extra $15.
That's why.
50,000 level, it's like $36. I don't like to minimize that, but it's, it's not like the huge amounts that we had earlier. And I, and I was hoping that we could go a little bit higher at the high end, because that's where, you know, I, I couldn't believe we had people at 200,000 gallons. I'm just glad that the press wasn't here, because that's a lot of water. However, in reviewing what you did, the 14% increase, A, that's just for the first year, and B, we do need to increase our rates to cover our costs. As the mayor said last month, and the month before, and the month before that, we're trying to let the administrative budget and the water budget stand on their own. And so we have to look at this very critically. The one thing that I, option two for me was that, the annual review. If next year, we decide, well, we only want to increase it 10% or 3% or none at the lower levels, we don't increase it. If we want to increase it more at the upper levels, then we do it. So it's nice to have that, well, not only is it nice to have that, your, your model, it's nice to understand it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your work.
Thanks, sir. Chairman and Vice Chairman, yeah, thank you. You know, a lot, you took what water markets gave us, and then tailored it to a year's more of data, and, and then gave us some more options, and superb job, superb job of internalizing this, as well as trying to give us options to stick with some of the things that we had talked about with trying to take somebody that was in the, the lower end and not have them affected. But we found that, that that was an unpopular, unpopular way, because the people in this city say, no, everybody should, everybody should pay more. The, the thing that's interesting that really shaped a lot of this discussion was one of the things that I said that, that I missed, and that was that it happened in September. And for the record, everybody talks about, well, the 80,000, 80,000 gallon user and 100,000 gallon user. The perspective on this is, it was the second hottest August on record in this area during a severe drought. And to keep in mind, council, 95, the high 95 people in this city used more than the city used in February prior, the entire city, in an entire month of February. So, you know, we, everybody was using their bill that they got in September, and we had realtors coming up here and telling us that there's no way we could, we could sell a house if it was going to be a $2,000 bill every month. Well, I can't imagine that somebody thinks it's realistic that they're going to, they're going to water 150,000 gallons in February, you know, December, January, February, March timeframe. And so, and that was, that was just my, my not realizing that, that the timing was, was pretty bad. So that, and I mentioned that not just to look back, but to also talk about, as we look at this chart, the reality of this is even the people that were using 150,000 gallons, they're going to be hard-pressed to use 150,000 gallons this month and next month. And so the average that they're going to be using over the year is far different than the outcry of the 150,000 gallons and, and the, and the $2,000 bill that they had, as I said, to keep their grass green during a severe drought in the second hottest August on record. And that is not in a vacuum, because anybody paying attention to the news, both print and, and TV, pretty much every city around here went through the same thing. And New Braunfels was smart enough to wait to raise their rates till after, after, after we got through the heat, but they're, they're, they're raising their rates, Saz, Civilo, everybody was raising their rates, and you saw on the news that people were, were all screaming, "There's no way I could have used this much water." So it was just bad timing. But, and also for the record, there wasn't, I, I never, to my knowledge, said that I didn't know how much the rates were going to go up. What I said was I didn't realize what was going to happen in, in August, and I didn't present it as such. So you really did a great job of showing that we still need to do this. And what was lost on a lot of people is that we didn't just sit and do nothing for five years, it was because we needed to have better data going in before we decided what to do, and we thought it was disingenuous to just raise the rates blindly without knowing what we needed to do. The users, they don't believe this, but they were beneficiaries of that five-year pause, because as we were determining what the real cost of the, of the water company was, and as we, we fully loaded the water company and did all the things we did over the last few years, they, their rates stayed the same. And also for the record, we're surrounded by cities that have baked in water increases every year. So it's not very controversial, because it's just there already, and everybody, everybody knows that next year's bill is going to be higher. I think, and we're going to talk about that in a separate motion, but I appreciate that you said, no, what we'll do is we'll just look at it every year. And because we have smart people like you that know how to use this model really well, we can take another year's worth of data, plug it back in, and see where we are. You know, the, this, this, these two options that you have, that we have presented right here are both strong viable options to maintain the, the fiscal solvency of the company, and, and be able to then kind of do a, what I would call a shoot look, and see, see what's going on. So, so, yeah, echoing everybody's comments up here, thank you for all the, the extraordinary amount of time and effort that you put into doing this. So, that said, all of us have had an opportunity to speak, and now it's a question of what's the council's will and what you want to do. And what I'd say is, what option, and also when you want this to, to take effect? Anyone?
I move to accept option two.
Okay, I have from place three, that we'll go with option number two.
Second?
And second from place one. Any further discussion or questions?
Do you want a recommendation on timing?
Absolutely.
Okay, we proposed, I think, last month or two months ago or so, we not start until December?
Yes.
I'm sorry, January.
Well, December for January bill, is what you.
Yes, yes. So when you get your Christmas bills, you get your new water bill.
So no change in that is what we.
That is correct.
What this, this body had decided, December, December for January.
I would support that.
Is that, that water company, that doable? Yeah, okay, yeah. So, and amplification in essence. Anything else, ma'am?
No, thanks.
Sure. Okay, so from place three, the motion for option number two, and place one with the second. All in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Again, fantastic job. And now moving to the annual part, I'll just, do you have anything else to say about that? I think you've pretty much covered it. We separated it out, but again, a lot of cities around here just say that it's going to be an X percent every, every year, period. Nobody even, it's not even a further discussion. But in this case, what, what we're recommending, particularly since this is our first time in, in nearly five years adjusting the rates, it really makes a lot of sense to do what they're asking. So looking for a motion to review the water rates annually. And what I will say is, I didn't pick up on this until today, but we should have been specific about when we say annually, do we mean like 12 months from now, or, so do you have an amplification of that recommendation?
Yes, sir. It'd be October of next year, just, I mean, it'd be after we get the budget approved for the fiscal year 2019, and we get the annual usage for the fiscal year 2020, which is September 30th or October 1st. So we will start the process in October, and then.
And bring to council.
In November.
In November.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great. Thanks for amplifying that.
Same, same time period, 12 months from now.
Council, any questions or comments on, on what that recommendation is? Starting on right side. Ma'am?
Yes, I would like, I, I support adopting an annual at his timetable, the recommendation. But I also would like to seriously, I just want on the record, to review the high-end users, because if there's somebody who thinks their green grass is more important than somebody having drinking water, I'd like to really reconsider that. The higher tier are penalized, if you will.
Copy that.
Thank you.
Okay, so that said, can I get a motion on this recommendation?
I move to review the water rates annually?
I have a motion from place three to review, review the water rates annually, to bring, and the analysis be done to bring to council in November of, of following year. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from place two. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Anything else?
Yes, I just want to cover, our next Water Commission meeting is, has been moved up to the third Tuesday because of Thanksgiving week, so our next meeting will be November 19th at 6:00 PM here. At the next meeting, we'll, we'll basically just focus on the water leak adjustments that Jacob Parsons is pushing up to us. And then for future topics, starting in the spring, we'll be looking at educational sessions on water conservation. So that's all I have to add.
Great job, and thank you so much. And you're about to also have another P. I don't know, you have some engineer wars going on. But, but it's fantastic, and really taking on the charge, we talked about, gosh, now, year and a half ago, with, with all of the different, the different projects, and really encouraging that, that this, this commission is really moving, moving out pretty, pretty handily. Thank you very much. Anything else for the Water Commission, starting on right side? Left side? Okay, item number nine D, Wildlife Management. Had one meeting. Mr. Krasinski is going to represent. Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. On our last meeting, we had a resignation of Jeremiah McKenney, place four. We accepted his resignation and interviewed two replacement candidates. We decided on Dr. Denise Minor-Williams for that place four commission, I guess that place four seat. And we are recommending her for, for that. Yeah, that's what I've got.
Okay, I'll take it.
Pretty simple.
I split these out. Let's first, I'd request a motion to accept the resignation of Jeremiah McKenney from, from place four in the Wildlife Management Advisory Commission.
I move to accept the resignation of Jeremiah McKenney from the Wildlife Management Advisory Commission.
I got a motion from place two. Could I get a second?
Second.
Place four with the second. Any further discussion, questions, starting left side?
With regrets. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to say with regrets, and we're losing a guy that's a wildlife biologist by profession, so that's a, a big loss to the Wildlife Commission, and I'll reserve my other comments when we bring the new person on.
Sir, anything? Ma'am?
I agree with Todd. Hate to see him go.
So, yeah, we are, we are losing somebody that is really an expert and has done a lot of great work. I will tell you, in his resignation, he actually volunteered to continue helping with the, the plan and anything else. So he's stepping away from it, but not entirely, and we really appreciate that. So going to motion from place two, a second from place four. All in favor of accepting the resignation? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. And then the second part, which is, we are very fortunate to have Dr. Minor-Williams. She's not here tonight, she told us she couldn't be here, but she's, she actually was here at the last council meeting, if you recall, representing with the Bat Conservation folks. But she is, she, she is very well-versed in the doings of wildlife management, and we're very fortunate that she, she stepped up to volunteer. So it's a recommendation of the Wildlife Management Advisory Commission to accept her on, in place four. Can I get a, a motion?
Move to approve.
Place one with a motion to approve Dr. Denise Minor-Williams.
I second the motion.
I get a second from place five. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Please pass on to her when you, when you see her, that we're excited to have her on there, as well as we've all told Jeremiah individually how much we, we appreciate what he did.
Will do.
Anything else for monthly activity?
So we had a couple of, we had a presentation on bees, I believe it's on YouTube. I felt it, I felt like it was very informative, so if you're interested in learning a little bit more about bees and pollinate, pollination, there's a good, I believe it's on YouTube, you can go watch it, it's pretty good. We did talk about the hogs, I know that's the next item. We did not come to counsel with a recommendation for that. We, as a commission, decided that the city was doing everything that they could to address that at this time, along with, I think Georgia Ranch had some initiatives they were working on as well, so, and I think there were some discussions around the school assisting potentially as well. So with all that said, we didn't come with a recommendation to do, or spend any money from our budget and the wildlife budget to addressing the hog situation. And other than that, I don't think we had anything else.
Thank you, David. Then what I'll add is. Then, uh, what I'll add is, later on in the agenda, we are going to talk about hogs and some other actions, but it's not, uh, because the Wildlife Management, uh, Advisory Commission didn't, didn't have the ideas or anything, but frankly, more things, there, there's been more developments since their meeting, so, it's, uh, it's just additional information, additional, additional courses, or potential courses of action, so that's the reason why it's on there. Um, any questions or comments for Wildlife Management, starting right side?
Um, did we ever take the time to, the, the biologist that stepped away from helping Garden Ridge, uh, with Texas Parks and Wildlife, did we ever take the opportunity to write him a letter, or his supervisor a letter, telling how much we appreciated what he did for the, for the city?
I know that our thank you's been passed along, I know that Cindy reached out, who's the, the, the chair of the Wildlife Commission, reached out to him and thanked him in person, um, and that, well, not in person, but via phone call or an email. I'm not sure if the city broadly did that or not, but I know that she reached out, uh, individually and did that.
Could we do that?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, let me take this.
Okay.
And take it, take it further, and just say, uh, first of all, I could, I just look for consensus from the council, would you be, would you be amenable to us sending to, uh, a copy to him, but to his supervision to say how much we appreciate what he did for the city? Okay? And what I would say, uh, is, if you would, take this back to your commission, see if they are too, and just, uh, write, write, have, have somebody write a quick note, uh, and, and what would be really pretty, pretty stylish, is if they all signed it, and then bring it to, we'll bring it, we'll give it to council, and they can all sign it, and his supervision will see that, uh, a whole bunch of people really appreciate all he did for our city.
For sure, we can do that.
Great, great idea, thank you.
Yeah, he walked away from a very difficult situation, and, and his, his contribution when he was here was, was incredible.
Yeah, he went above beyond.
I think he needs to have something in his work files that says how much we appreciated it.
And he trained, he did already transitioned out of the, uh, out of what was the biologist position into another position and still helped us out, so that was a little extra effort be, of above and beyond what was normally asked of him, so, yeah.
Great idea, thank you. Ma'am, anything? Counsel, anything? Thank you very much, pass on, we appreciate all that you're doing. Next up is nine E, Parks Committee.
Uh, to be succinct, um, we're well into planning for the tree lighting ceremony. Uh, we had a meeting today, we have another meeting this month, um, we have a extensive task list, and we're right on, right on point in terms of getting, uh, things done. Um, the tree lighting ceremony is December the 5th, um, we start staging, um, our equipment, if you will, on December the 2nd, uh, on that Monday, and the only problem we foresee is takedown has to be on, in one day, on December the 6th, it's a Friday. Um, but we, we're going to work around that and get as many people and volunteers as possible to help us take the stuff down and get it packed up and out of there in, in one day. Um, but we're real excited at how things are coming. Um, I think it'll be, um, as good as not, if not better than it was last year. I'll entertain questions.
Great, sir, um, thank you, and, and we're all excited about it, and before I hand it over, want to add, um, thanks to working with, uh, the Scouts and Public Works, uh, on Fairview Park, and making that park happen as well.
Yes.
And it is an official city, uh, park, and all the, all that goes with it, and we really appreciate that, uh, that y'all had a big hand in that as well. So, uh, starting left side, questions, comments for Parks?
Yes, this, uh, this is not as premature as it may seem, but we have run into this situation several years where we go to a lot of effort, as we know, to create this wonderful spectacle, and then we're tasked to take it down in six hours, one morning. And I would like to suggest, as I've done in the past, not in this forum, but with Ms. Kane and, and other officials in previous years, a community center is a community center, I think it's for the citizens, and I see no harm in potentially reserving one weekend a year for our citizens, not worry about renting it, and we move our parks tree lighting to either a Friday or Saturday night, we've got the whole darn weekend. I think, I think, just think it would help all the attendees, I think it would help, we could even maybe expand it to, you know, nine o'clock if it's not, not on a school night. I just think it would help everybody around, and I think it would help with takedown and so on, not unlike we do with Paul Davis Park, where we reserve the whole park for 4th of July and actually preceding days or so for setup. I think it's time we consider that. We know that it's a successful event, and as far as I know, it's going to continue way into the future. And we also know that if we continue to have it on Thursdays, this is going to conflict throughout 2020. We know that the judges, already municipal court, will conflict again next year, as it will this year. So, I would really like to get it on the table now, that we consider in the near future, that we just reserve that weekend for our citizens. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll answer that, that we'll look at that. We need to make sure that before we say, oh, yeah, that's a great idea for next year, it isn't already reserved for next year. Sometimes people will reserve, uh, a year out for weddings, uh, or, you know, those kind of things. So, we need to make sure that it's, it's not an issue. So, we will look at it, and we will come back and report, but, uh, you, you, for the record, you could have said something, we could have looked at it before we walked in here, so.
For the record, I just thought about it, because I found out just today. You know, I just found out today that for a third year in a row, we've been given, I believe, false information about when, how long we have our terrorist project down. And I've been there every single time, and it's getting tiresome.
Okay, well, we, we will, we will run this to ground, we'll talk, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it next time, uh, and, um, I would venture a guess that whoever's giving the information doesn't know that it's quote-unquote "false" information. So, we'll take a look at it, okay? Good. Again, thank you. And Volunteer Garden Ridge?
Um, again, to be succinct, um, the outreach efforts that we've, uh, made, um, last month and over the last two months, uh, haven't been as successful as I would hope, but we really haven't put a whole lot of time into it, because there's a lot of, uh, conflicting things going on, uh, in the city, um, and amongst, amongst the people running Volunteer Garden Ridge. We've had several nibbles, if you will, and we need to follow up a little bit and set the hook, so to speak, on the, on the several nibbles that we had. Uh, but we've also had some ideas about how to make it better, and we'll try them. Um, the problems we're having with volunteer and volunteerism, um, are not unique to, to Garden Ridge, I'm finding out. Um, it's hard to get volunteers for everything. We'll keep trying.
We appreciate that, thank you. And, uh, after the dust settles, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll reengage with you too, so, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. And the dust settles in, what, about 18 years?
Yeah.
Questions, comments for Volunteer Garden Ridge, starting right side? Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to approvals, authorizations, item number 10, A, is feral hogs, uh, the item is to review and discuss proposal. Uh, so first of all, city actions, our, our animal services and public works, and frankly, everybody that, uh, can help has been helping, uh, putting out traps and pens, uh, and consulting with trappers. Our, uh, our, uh, public works, uh, folks, and, and particularly our animal services, but also our, uh, our public works director, have talked to at least three trappers that I know of, asking them, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong, what can we do? And the consensus from the trappers is they would be doing the same thing. Uh, and they gave us some, uh, some tips on what to do with the bait, and how to make it so it's not so attractive to deer, and, uh, one of them said that acorns, which was scoffed at on public, in, uh, social media, was, is actually kind of like, uh, crack to a, to a hog apparently, and that's why that went out, uh, and, uh, some people have been collecting that. But nevertheless, uh, you heard something that, uh, is, is a common comment with, with trappers is, they know that when there's, uh, particularly a, a, a mom hog in the group that's trap-smart, they'll actually nudge away and push the other hogs away from the trap. Uh, it's, it's crazy to watch it on film, and they really do that, they're that smart. So, that's one of the things that we're up against. Um, but, uh, we have, um, uh, we also have had some people petition the city to authorize, and, uh, I won't do air quotes, but I'll say, quote, "professionals" to hunt in the, in city limits. And, uh, the, there's a couple of problems with that. One is there's no, it's a pretty loose definition of what a professional is to begin with, but, uh, moreover, it's not just an issue of the city ordinance saying that it's a problem with hunting in the city, but it's a problem with the state saying it's a problem with hunting in the city. And we've, uh, engaged with our attorney and asked our attorney to analyze this. You were sent, uh, a, a, a letter, uh, on this, so you would be armed with the information, understand why it's, uh, it's a, a bridge that's extraordinarily too far to allow somebody to be hunting, uh, in, in, uh, in our neighborhoods. Uh, but, uh, I'm going to turn this over to our attorney to ask her to explain a little bit of that.
So, one of the things that we considered was, is there a possibility of just rescinding the ordinance, um, and then would that give, you know, someone the right to do this? Um, as we documented for you in the memo, it is, there is a penal code violation, um, under 4201, um, to allow that, that type of discharge of firearms, uh, within the city limits, um, because of the definitions, the particular definitions that apply to the penal code. Um, did a little bit of additional research, and I confirmed with chief, um, shortly before the meeting, uh, and what we can also confirm is not only is that there that penal code definition and that penal code violation, which is a Class B misdemeanor offense, it is also a violation of a separate chapter of the, uh, penal code, which is a felony offense, and so, whatever the city does, because there is also the felony offense at play, and the potential for a felony offense at play for discharge of a firearm, um, within city limits, um, the city has no authority to, to authorize that kind of, and they're going, I'll skip the air quotes, but no authority to authorize that type of discharge within the city limits.
And, and, and let me add, she said discharge firearm a couple of times, but in the note that you have, you see that it actually says, "or other weapon, shotgun, air rifle, pistol, BB gun, bow and arrow." Uh, so it, it's all of that, although the, uh, people that, uh, don't, apparently don't use these things very much, consider all, they just say discharge firearm, but they're really talking about all that stuff. So, that, that said, while, uh, our attorney has the floor, I want to offer, if anybody has any questions about this particular topic, not about, uh, the hog trapping or anything in general, but just about the memo you got and the idea of allowing people to hunt in our city. Starting on the right side, any comments or questions?
Um, I don't think hunting in our city has any place, there's way to trap these hogs, if we get experienced people, we can, we could do that successfully. It's been done, I've done it myself before.
Ma'am?
No way.
Okay. Uh, so then, um, taking this a step further, as I said, we've been, we've bought extra traps, we've been trying lots of different, uh, things, we're up against having, uh, some hogs that are trap-smart, and, um, you know, we're still trying to help. Uh, then, so the next step is, we, uh, we went to some trappers and said, uh, what can you do if we engaged your services to trap? And I'd like to turn this over to our city administrator, uh, so she can explain some discussions that she's had. Go ahead.
I spoke with, um, Ryan Murphy with RMH Ranch, or RMH Services, they have done our, did our deer trapping, uh, this past, uh, year, or past season. He has submitted a quote, or an estimate, that would be initial trap setup and takedown of $2,500, and then a weekly trap capture, capture fee with a two-week minimum of $500 per week. What he would be using is a trap that is similar to what he used when he was trapping deer, but it would be smaller. If you remember, the, the sides are open, and it is electronically controlled. When he would see hogs in the trap, then the sides would go down, and the pin would be locked up. Upon knowing that he had hogs in the trap, he would respond immediately. He would load the hogs up and remove them out of the city. There would not be any shooting of any hogs in the city limits. He would take them to either a ranch who wants hogs, or donate them to someone who would process the meat to feed the needy.
So, um, what we have is, uh, somebody that has an alternative, uh, to the traps that, uh, hogs are obviously trap-smart to. And, um, uh, he, he, we know him, obviously, he has a track record with us, uh, and he, this is his, uh, offer to go ahead and do two weeks' worth, so we're talking $3,500 in a couple of weeks to see if he can, and, and, and what we've been told by other trappers is if he manages to get the, those, the, the mama hogs that are trap-smart, uh, all of a sudden, we're going to start catching other hogs in our traps as well. Uh, no promises, of course, but that's, uh, that's the way, the conventional wisdom, uh, in hog trapping. Um, so, uh, what, what, uh, we are proposing to do, and, uh, for your action tonight, uh, your, your consideration and action tonight, is to engage with, with, um, RMH Exotics LLC, LMNOP, and, uh, to go ahead and do this in George Ranch first. Now, that said, if this works and works out well, that also consider going over to Trophy Oaks, and I want to, I don't want to forget Trophy Oaks. You know, you rewind a couple of years, and I stood in front of our Wildlife Management Committee and said, hey, uh, I know everybody's putting a spotlight on deer, but they're having a problem in that neighborhood with hogs, and it's going to get worse everywhere. Uh, and, uh, so, this is something that I don't want to forget about Trophy Oaks as well. But I don't think it's, I personally, I'm recommending to you to, we don't go, huh, whole hog on this, and, uh, do both neighborhoods all at once until we see how this is working out and if it's, if it's effective. So, that said, um, the, the action, it says take action, propose, uh, and authorize city administrator, execute documents associated with the services. So, I'll, I'll emphasize that what I'm asking you to do is to consider authorizing our city administrator to, to, uh, contract, uh, on behalf of the city with Ryan Murphy for what you see here for two weeks, see how it's going, see if we need to do it any further, but also if it's working out there, to also bring it over to Trophy Oaks and, uh, try to get some of the hogs that are over there. Uh, and to put a bound on it, I'd say, uh, that, uh, that, you know, we, we have the Wildlife Management Advisory Commission, uh, money, uh, and it's for the deer, we, we never use all of that, we put it in there, but I think it would be prudent for us to say not to exceed $10,000 of that, of the money that's in there. Uh, and I, I, I will tell you that we probably will, will, most likely will not use all that money on the deer anyway. So, my recommendation for you to consider is to give her, give, uh, our city administrator the authorization to execute these contracts, to first start with, with George Ranch, if it's working out well, go to Trophy Oaks, and to not exceed $10,000 without coming back to you. Comments, questions, starting on the left side?
Yes, does he have to get a permit for this?
No.
No, they're not, they're, they're not game animals.
Pardon me?
They're, they're not game animals, so.
No, okay, well, I'm.
Texas Parks and Wildlife doesn't have anything to do with it.
Just asking, okay. Um, I don't know if it's relevant to anyone else or whatever, but I personally, I'm in favor of it, actually, I'm in favor instead of the deer, but, um, would he be willing to provide the ultimate destination? Would he share that with us? Just so we know, if we're feeding or if we're stalking somebody's game ranch? Can we ask him to provide that?
I don't see why not.
I don't think it's not, it's not.
We didn't make it part of the discussion, because.
Yeah, it's not a stipulation.
Nobody really cared, but, yeah, if you care, we'll see what we, obviously you do.
I'll ask.
So, we'll ask.
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Yeah, we got to get it figured out. Um, and by the way, this is a lot bigger deal than just the city of Garden Ridge. Um, people want to blame the high school, they want to blame the Vista Ridge water pipeline, the fact of the matter is, it's a statewide problem. Um, and I think some of the people that are really concerned about it, myself included, need to start to engage with TPW about how we're going to deal with it. Um, I have an access, I have access to a hunting lease that's quite close to the city of Garden Ridge, but outside the city limits, and I saw a sounder of hogs last weekend that was over 70. And I couldn't get a clear shot at them, and I'll admit it, because they were in the brush. Um, so that's given you an idea of something of what's going on out there, and I've never seen that before, so this is, is absolutely insane. Um, that said, this, trying to figure this out has got to be our priority, even if it means cutting back on deer trapping, all those kind of things. It, it, they are far more destructive and far more dangerous, uh, and that needs to be our priority, so I'd love to see this work, uh, and maybe it's something we can get to the state of Texas to help out, I don't know. to help out, I don't know. Just musing out loud here.
Comments, questions?
Councilman Bauer, there is no ranch in the state of Texas going to accept hogs. That's, they've got enough of their own.
I'm only basing that on what Nancy said.
And they will, they will shoot them just like we should be shooting them as soon as they leave the city limits, so.
I'm only asking based on what Ms. Kane said.
That's, now, my biggest concern right now is the hogs have moved on. We cannot attract those hogs back here. It's their, it's their pattern that will bring them back. So do we set up these pens right now and hope for the best? Or do we pay $500 a week and not catch anything for the next month or two until their pattern comes back this way? Again, they're gone from here right now. They're not going to come back because we start feeding. They're off doing something else. So we have to concern ourselves with, and if, they're going to charge us $500 a week, does that include a guarantee that they're going to at least catch some hogs?
No, there was no guarantee in.
Okay, well then, we ought to take a real hard look at what, no, they're good. I mean, they'll be able to do it. A pen like they have, that's actually a short one so the deer can jump out, is probably the best way to get a number of hogs at one time. But I think we're a little bit premature if the dogs are not here now. That's my thought.
Yeah, the, the, obviously, the reason why they're, that we're not seeing as many is because now there's water that's been raining, there's water, there's greenery, there's, there's something for them to eat and drink that's not in the lush green yard. So, yeah, we're not seeing as many of them. But we can research that and see if they, if we're not seeing any at all, then maybe we shouldn't be doing this, I don't know.
And reference to Trophy Oaks, we have not seen a hog in that neighborhood for about two years.
That's not.
Now, I do know that my friend Dale, and everybody knows him, has had his mulch fluffed up, but I don't think there's been any damage.
Well, we've caught hogs out, right outside in the entrance. I mean, that's what that pen is, is to try to prevent them from getting into the neighborhood. And we have caught hogs there.
Recently?
Yes, yes. Ms. Steinmetz, how, how recent? Do you happen to know off the top of your head?
He's off mic, but he said September.
Yeah, I know that we've caught, we've got some just recently, yeah.
I wasn't.
And, and that's the, the pen, that's kind of the, the mitigation pen to try to keep them from going into the neighborhood, from, from the quarry area. So, no, you bring up a good point, and I, and I, I don't know. I don't know if they're gone for good.
And they're not gone for good, they're just not.
Well, I don't mean gone for good for, I mean, gone for good for while it's raining and while, you know, our green yards are not the, much as attracting to them. But we can find out. Ma'am?
Nancy had her hand up. All I was going to add is, when I spoke with Mr. Murphy, he asked when the last time we saw the hogs. I let him know. He said they will be back once it gets cold and the, the vegetation starts dying off, they're going to probably come back in where there's still some vegetation in the city.
I had the same concerns as Brian on timing and guarantee. I mean, I'd hate for us to put it out, you know, spend $3,500 and our timing be all off and not catch any of the hogs. So I mean, that's part of my concern. And I guess longer term, do we just keep catching hogs? I mean, catching more hogs? I mean, how do we prevent the hogs? I mean, I know there's been some talk about fencing in George Ranch. I mean, that's not a city issue per se, but where does it end?
Like Todd said, he saw 75 in one group and they multiply, every female multiplies at, at least twice a year, if not three, and they all have between eight and 10 babies. And it takes them about, those babies about nine months before they can start having their own. So the numbers, I mean, you can, are amazing what you can come up with.
So you talk to a rancher or you talk to a farmer that has this problem and they don't go, "Well, I'm not going to kill them," because where does it end? They kill them.
No, that's not what I'm, I'm not suggesting not killing, I'm just suggesting this is the long term.
And maybe the long term is we keep killing them. Or, you know.
I did a little research on it. TPWD right now is saying that if you bring 10 hogs into the room right now, to keep the population where it's at currently, you got to take out seven of them.
Yeah.
A 70% rate. That's ridiculous. Now, I had a question, and I'm sorry, I'm going out of turn here a little bit.
Yeah, so we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
As far as the timing of it, I, I think we can leave it to Ryan Murphy to put them out when he thinks the best time. One thing that kind, that I, I was thinking about, I've got a lease and every once in a while, I'll, you know, it's, it's got corn and, but it's out in the country. And I'll throw vegetables, apples, whatever, to vary the, the diet and it, they, I guess it's like trick or treat. They come back to see what they can find. Because I've had pretty good success, especially with the hogs. But, you know, one citizen mentioned acorns, and we got some acorns over there. And got a whole lot of pumpkins we could use, and I've got some leftover Snickers that we could use. I know they'll love those. But I, I think I would be really interested in working with him and just let him use his judgment, because it's obviously better than most of ours.
Okay, so reattack, starting on the left side. Anybody? Go ahead.
I'm kind of with what John was asking. I'm wondering how responsive can he be? Do we wait till the next time we see hogs in the city and he comes out the next day and pops traps up? I don't know if he's that responsive. That's really my question.
That I would have to ask that question.
Yeah, clearly, she's not representing him, she doesn't know. Anything else?
No.
Sir? Ma'am? Sir? Okay, so what, going to item number two, what does council want to do?
I, I think we ought to probably go ahead and ask him to put up these pens. He can keep them with corn in them. Again, if they're low pens, one hog panel high, then the deer can jump out. And when he sees them starting to accumulate hogs in them, then start them back up again. But, and just leave them open, leave the, leave the door open until we start having hogs come in.
Okay, so, you have a motion?
But no, don't, don't kick in the $500 a week until we know we have the hogs are back.
Okay, so what's your motion? Or does anybody have a motion? Or am I going to move on to item number 10B?
Go ahead and enlist him to set up the pens at this point. And then ask him what he thinks about when he's going to start charging us and we're not going to pay until we start seeing hogs again. Is that not a really a motion, is it? That's not really a motion.
It's not. And also, you're making an assumption that he's willing to set up the pens and then not start the $500 a week. And.
That's a pretty substantial fee for setting up a pen.
I agree. But he didn't split it out and say, "Then he wasn't going to do anything." So he said he wanted a two-week minimum once he put the pens up, is what his. So, again, what do y'all want to do?
Wasn't the issue to authorize Nancy to negotiate with him?
Yes.
Okay, then I move that we authorize the city administrator, Nancy Kane, to negotiate putting up hog traps.
Okay.
Does that cover it?
Sort of, but I also want to talk about, because you are the, y'all are the authority on the money as well. So what I suggested was putting a cap and saying it was coming from the Wildlife Management Advisory Commission budget.
I have no, I have no problem doing that, but I think we ought to table this until Nancy gets to talk to him.
Okay, so we're going to wait another month?
Yes.
Okay? That's what, that's what one council person says. So what does council want?
I think we need to talk, authorize Nancy to do it with a limit of, let's say, no more than $10,000, but it doesn't have to be done tomorrow or next week. She's done a lot of negotiating, I'm sure she's tough. But what I'd like to do is leave it with her and Ryan to set them up when they think is the best time to do it. With no more than a $10,000 maximum.
So is, is your motion to allow her to negotiate?
Yes.
To use $10,000 out of the Wildlife Management Advisory Commission budget?
Something like that. Yes, yes.
Okay, good. So that's what I have for motion. Authorize city administrator to work with RMH Exotics to determine when the best time is to put these traps up and to put some traps up and to not exceed $10,000 using it out of the WAMAC budget. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Place two with a second. Now, further discussion, one thing I want to say is thank you for the vote of confidence to our city administrator about the negotiation. And fact is, this is not his regular price. She's already negotiated it down to this, because we already do business with him, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, he, he normally charges considerably more to do this. So, yes, astute observation, she is, she is skilled at negotiating and she did exactly that on behalf of the city. So I have a motion, place four, and a second from place two. Any further discussion, starting on the left side?
No.
No.
Okay. All in favor of authorizing city administrator to, to work this, to execute this with RMH Exotics, not to exceed $10,000 out of WAMAC budget? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? It was unanimous? Thank you very much. And we'll keep you posted. Okay, moving on to item 10B. One, it's discussion, take action on possible retention of a public information officer. Okay, so bringing you this, not necessarily for action right now, but more of a, of a discussion and to see if you want us to continue in this direction. We are having lots of issues with, with stuff going on on social media, people engaging the, the print news, different news media, that we have to answer questions that, that are based on a whole lot of misinformation. You know, we have, we, if we had a public information person, whether it was part-time or contractor, part-time, you know, like a half-time kind of person, we don't have to do, it would, we could afford something like that in the budget. A full-time person is another story, but, or even a contractor, that we could do things like when, when you, I don't know if you're aware of this, but you all got beat up because you didn't want to hear from your constituents in the city, because people were writing to you based on what somebody put on social media as your email address, and it was a wrong email address. And finally, somebody realized it was a wrong email address. But if we had a PIO, that person could intervene right then and say, "Hey, everybody, that's the wrong email address. Don't be, don't be saying that they don't want to hear from you, you're just using the wrong email address." So there's lots of situations, incidents that I could bring up anecdotally, but the fact of the matter is, is it's maybe time for us to consider having somebody help us with the message, as well as the delivery, as well as addressing social media and social media, I want to call it fake news, but inaccuracies and, and all of those kinds of things. So, again, this is not to necessarily do any contracting or hiring or anything, but I just wanted to get, to bring this out for a discussion, because we can't talk about this any other time than in the meeting. So I wanted to kind of throw that, that chum out and then see what you all think about what we could do. And then we will move, if you want us to, and it doesn't have to be a vote, it can be a consensus, we can move, excuse me, forward with some more information options and bring back to you next month. So, starting over on the right side, thoughts on this?
Well, I've got mixed feelings on it. Theoretically, we shouldn't need it, but the frustration is that there is so much misinformation. And one, you know, there, there are all kinds of examples, so I won't go into them, because I think most of you have heard them. But I'm, I'm not opposed, I just don't like us having to do it.
Okay. Any, and while you're, and I'm really very interested in what all of you think about the approach on whether, you know, we try to do contractor or we do a part-time person. Again, we won't be able, I, not in the budget right now to be able to hire a full-time person to do it, but, but we could, you know, remember, a part-time person is no benefits and that kind of thing, and it helps, helps the, helps the budget quite a bit. So any thoughts on any of that? Councilman McCall?
I would hope we wouldn't need more than a part-time person. And I, I think it's a good idea, either contract or, well, contract or if we have some, an employee that could do other things also.
An employee, you mean hiring another employee?
Well.
Because we, the employees we have don't have the bandwidth to be doing this, too.
I understand. That's why I'm saying it would be, like, if we need an assistant somewhere, they could possibly do two jobs at once.
Gotcha.
I, I don't want to take, have some of our people currently adding this, because it could turn out to be substantial, but.
And remember.
I would look part-time.
Yes, sir. And, and to make sure that, I, I, I hope I didn't mislead you, I'm not saying this is just not watching social media and answering it, it's the message, it's, it's, it's all of the things that are about our message and about our outreach. It's, you know, the messaging and the message on our website and all of that stuff. So it's, it's not just sitting there and monitoring Facebook and, and Nextdoor and answering it. It's not what I'm suggesting. Anything else, sir? Anything else? Ma'am?
This is something I'm definitely for, and I think it's, you know, again, beyond just kind of addressing misinformation, it's also getting out positive information about the city. It's about publicizing city events, it's about working with commissions, something that Jesse and I have talked a lot about, is educating the citizens about the water rates. You know, how do we present that to the public? How do we put it on the website? Are there's brochures that we can put together that would help our citizens understand those kinds of things? Again, the issue with how do we educate the people about why we make decisions about the deer? You know, how do we let the citizens get to know who our volunteers are or what our commissions actually do so they may want to attend? So there's this whole positive spin to things, too. And, you know, the misinformation part for me is mostly about not taking up everybody else's time, all the city staff having to answer the phone or, you know, having to, and just get so bogged down and all that, you know, the negative misinformation and the, you know, the, the false information. So, I mean, I think there's two sides of this, and I think the positive side is, would be a real benefit to the city.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Sir?
I can need, I can see the need, but I just have to wonder if a public relations individual, have we grown that much that we actually need one? I don't know what the answer is. It's, that's, that's another employee. We still have to staff the police department fully, which I think should be a priority over a public relations officer or individual. It is that, what you're talking about, Lacy, is necessity, it really is. Those are my thoughts.
Yes, sir. And, and that's why I'm also throwing out the option of having it be a contractor or a part-time person, something that keeps the price, the cost down considerably. Sir?
Okay. And I, and I love the discussion that's going on up here, because this is, in my mind, supposed to be a positive event. We have things happen in the city, we have things going on. We have city council meetings every month. Oftentimes, it's five or six people come to the city council meetings, something then comes up and everybody screams, "Well, I didn't know." And it's been, on our Facebook page, it's on the city council meeting minutes, it's now going out on YouTube, people can review that, and they still don't know. So I view a public information officer as another venue to communicate through, a way to expand our communications. The communication cycle now in the world is very, very fast, as we all know. And like, like Councilwoman Swin said, some of our city employees are getting beat up by folks, maybe beat ups not the right question, right term, but they're getting bogged down in people calling up, coming in, doing Freedom of Information Act requests, demanding information about something that somebody posted online that's outright false or misleading or incomplete data sets or cherry pick data sets or, quite frankly, just a false personal attack that's been made up with the intent of harming somebody. That's the kind of thing I'd like to address with this, is to be able to just not. That's the kind of thing I'd like to address with this, is to be able to just not go after the person that's doing it, but here's the actual facts, folks. So before you pick up the phone and call the city, ooh, I can look at the Nextdoor thread and go, oh, they're not actually currently doing X, Y, or Z. And put out fact-based, straight-up information and that's it. I think either a contractor or a part-time employee, whichever is the most reasonable price for their performance would be the way to go with it. And it's, like I said when I started talking here, it's another way to communicate with people and a lot of folks are getting a lot of their information off of these different online media. And I think we need to, we're going to have to engage on it. It's, we get behind the information cycle and all of a sudden you're battling uphill.
Ma'am?
I totally support the idea. I think our staff is overwhelmed, not, nothing to their discredit, it's just an awful lot is asked of them. I think the idea of a PIO would be, that person would be not only proactive in being positive for the city, but also reactive when negative is out there. Or just to clarify, I mean, people can legitimately misunderstand an issue, doesn't mean there's a problem. I also see this as potential for marketing the future development and that person could be in place to bring them along, to know, okay, this, it's much like what Mr. Lancy and I discussed last year, you know, creating a marketing plan, if you will, and I think PIO officer would be key to that. And I think it should be a contract person who has the capacity to grow with the city.
Okay, that's all great and I appreciate all those thoughts, but as you heard other people speak, maybe something else came to mind. So I actually want to go back to the right and see if there's anything else you want to add before we move forward.
No, the only thing that I would add is, but was added to what I said. So I'm fine. I totally agree.
Ma'am, sir?
Let's keep it to a part-time and I'm agreeable to it.
Okay, so again, we don't have to have a vote on this, but I did want to get a consensus that we will move forward with exploring the options of either finding somebody that can do this with a contract or as a part-time person. And we'll get closer to this and over, and I don't know if we can get it done in the next 30 days to bring you some concrete options, but at least we'll get closer to it now that we know that we're not moving towards something that you don't even want us to do. So this has, this would have been great. Thank you for those ideas and for those thoughts. Ms. Kane, anything to add to this?
No.
Okay, great. Anybody have anything else on this? All right, moving on to item number 10C, Garden Ridge Market Days. Discuss status and monthly activity. And I want to first offer up to Councilwoman Swin, she's been heading this thing up, so she's got some things she wants to talk about.
Actually, we have our market manager, Kim Wood, here today to give the update on the market. We've sort of taken the approach that this is kind of like a startup business, so we had, did a little SWOT analysis that she's going to present so we can kind of get a baseline for where we're at now that we've got a professional onboard.
Press the button.
No, you need to turn the mic on, turn the mic on.
Sorry, new at this. There I am. Hi. So yes, thank you for that introduction, Lisa. I'm Kim Wood and do have some experience at this stuff. I ran a marketing company and events company for over eight years and have my degree in marketing and public relations, so it's a pleasure to be here. You're in good hands and I'm very excited to be here and represent the Garden Ridge Market Days, so. And like Lisa said, we pulled together a SWOT analysis so that you all would have a better idea of what's going on with the market right now and the present strengths and weaknesses of the market so that we can make decisions moving forward with that. So I will just get right into that. The strengths that we have going on with Market Days right now, we have a very loyal customer base with visitor counts from around 2,000, around 2,000 since we started the market back in May. There's a high level of interest from vendors and a variety of products that they're offering and they're from all over San Antonio and the surrounding cities. We have 50 vendors this month, which is almost double the size of previous months, so we're doing quite well, growing the market. And it's, we're steadily increasing the earning, earning income every month with the market as well. We're expanding the vendor pool and we're projecting close to $1,500 in vendor fees for this month alone. Some of the weaknesses going into that, there is limited space in the city hall parking lot, so that is where we obviously host the market, but because we are growing in vendors, we actually have to cap the number at what we're currently at, which is the 50. So we cannot, at this point, accommodate a growing vendor waitlist that we do have. We do have a little bit of a lack of capital here at the start. There is no real money to invest in more extensive marketing at this time or other activities that we could add to the market, things to generate people coming in and interest in the event is very important, obviously, to keeping something like this going. So, and the other thing is we don't have a lot of volunteers at this time. We're obviously working on that and like we mentioned earlier, that is an overall city, you know, issue that we have, so it's not just us, obviously. The opportunities that we have, the demographics of Garden Ridge itself are changing and the majority have expressed an interest in retail offerings, so we're providing that and able to act on that. As a stopgap measure through the market, the city is able to serve as an incubator for small local businesses and being situated...
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you. We are off the agenda for what we should be talking about, I believe. Are we? What is, we are supposed to be...
The purpose of this right now is to get a status of it and because our...
How is this not a status and monthly activity update?
Let me finish, please. So to get a, to get a status and to discuss some of the things that Councilwoman Swin thinks that y'all need to make some decisions on. Having a guest speaker and having our contracted manager speaking right now was not on the agenda. I was not told that you were going to have this presentation and so, but I've been, I've been sitting here letting it go, so you need to wrap this up.
The market, in my opinion, is very, it's growing rapidly and it is a big deal, it is a big issue to discuss. We have over 70,000 people on social media that have already recognized just the one November market coming up right now. We have over 3,000 RSVPs to that market and that is more than we've had for the last markets all combined since May. So I do think it's an important issue to address. The threats that you were mentioning that we do need to discuss, I'm sure that was the next thing and Lisa can address those so that I can wrap it up.
It's Councilwoman Swin, by the way.
So excuse me, new to that.
No, Kim, I apologize for the mayor. He's treated you completely rudely up here. If there was somebody who's at fault, it's me. Apparently Kat knew, there are plenty of people that knew up here that she was going to be presenting.
So let's review. Whose meeting is this? Who runs this meeting?
Oh, I know, it's your meeting.
Yes.
I know.
So if you're going to have somebody come in and speak to this body, you need to let me know. It's not on the agenda, nobody has said anything to me about it. And you're looking, you're looking at one of our employees expecting...
I am looking at people who put the agenda together.
We will talk about this...
I mean, when I sent the message to you and Nancy, I said I'd like her to speak. Nancy, do you remember me saying that in the email?
So let's move on.
I, I'm, cut my whole, cut the whole deal.
Let's move on. Is there anything that you want to bring to council on Garden Ridge Market Days?
No.
So let's, for the record, let's talk about a few things because it's very important. Right now, on social media, the hours have been changed for the market. Is that correct?
Correct.
The council did not approve those hours.
I guess that's correct.
There has been an expenditure on the market that the council did not approve.
Which expenditure?
Is that correct, ma'am? Is that correct?
Which expenditure?
The expenditure of a hundred and something dollars that your market manager expended that now we're talking about that we need to reimburse her for. That was not, that is, that is money that the market does not have and it's money...
The market has $1,300 in its account.
But we don't have the money to run the market and to pay the market manager, is that correct?
No, we do.
So then why haven't we paid the market manager?
We can pay the market manager.
Okay.
The market manager has been paid.
So, and...
Nancy, do you understand what he's saying?
Your note to me was that we have a market manager that spent money that was not an authorized expenditure. Is that correct or incorrect?
The market manager prepaid for some things and on my list, as you know, is a request for some seed money or some, what did I write down? Or a line of credit or something that we can borrow against because what we're doing is we're spending money and then we are waiting for vendor fees to come in and going back and paying things. We're operating in arrears.
So to review, we're spending money that we don't have that was not authorized by the council. We're changing the hours without being authorized by the council. We're asking for extra money when the council said...
No, sir.
Let me finish. And we're asking for extra money when the council said that they were going to seed this for three months and then it needed to be, the market needed to be self-sufficient. If you are, if you or anybody are authorizing changes to what the council has authorized and then bringing it to council to ask for the approval after the changes have been made, I have a problem with that.
Well, I disagree with your representation of things.
Have the hours been changed?
The hours have not officially been changed.
Is it on social media saying what the hours are?
It is on my list and we discuss...
Okay, well, we'll move on.
Okay, am I allowed to talk or no?
Go ahead.
I had this discussion with you and I told you that we specifically designed the banners with the times off of them because we did not want to commit to the hours. I did say that Kim put out some time on social media and I should have caught that. It is on my list to ask council about that. It is at the vendor's request that we extend the market by an hour.
Is it announced on the...
Yes, I just told you it was.
It's been announced.
And I told you that we could re...
Prior to the council approving it. That's a very important thing.
Okay.
Nobody on staff, nor I, will ever get in front of the decisions of council and then hope that when we come in, council will say, yes, that's all right. We talked about that.
Oh, correct, and I told you I made a mistake.
But now you're saying it didn't even happen.
No, I didn't say that. Where did I say that? I said it went out on social media and I said I should have caught it.
All right, so instead of arguing, we're going to just move on and what do you need from council on this Garden Ridge Market Days? What do you need?
What do I need from council? The things that I, on my list was request to change hours, to add an additional hour at the request of the vendors.
What else?
Do we do a motion on that?
No, let me go through the list. Again, our budget is $375. I was going to request that we take some things off the budget, including a hundred dollars expense that is on our budget to slowly buy our own set of tables and chairs from the community center. It's come to my attention that there are probably some months that we don't even have access to those tables and chairs and that we could probably buy them cheaper on my own or on our own and that would take $100 out of the budget a month. It's also come to my attention that when the market started, we also, we used to have parks and, I'm sorry, our public works person there for block of time from seven to nine and then the last hour. That would also help us cut down on the expenses and add some more money back into the budget. That would be a total of $185 back into the budget. So those were two things.
So wait a minute, make sure we understand what you're asking. You're asking for the city labor to work less at the market?
Correct. That's what we initially started in, to reduce costs.
Okay. So specifically, how many hours are they working now and how many hours do you want them to work?
They're working six hours now. We only need them for three.
And when are those three hours?
Seven to nine and the last hour of the day.
So you want them to come in, work for a couple hours, go home and then come back for an hour?
That's what we initially did. You didn't have a problem with it then.
That was when the city was paying for the whole thing, but that's a tall order to ask somebody, anybody, to leave and come back a couple hours later and work for one more hour.
And we can work on getting it covered with volunteers.
Okay, what else?
And again, if I can reduce some of the expenses, I won't ask for the seed money because obviously that's a sticking point.
What expenses are you going to reduce?
I just told you if we could take the tables and chairs, the $100 off of our list...
So how are you going to get tables and chairs?
We will temporary borrow, temporarily borrow them from the community center. We're being asked to pay to use the tables and chairs from the community center.
And as I recall, the discussion in here, the reason for paying for them was because it puts wear and tear on the community center's equipment that now you're just going to put wear and tear on it and they're not going to have the ability to be able to replace those chairs and tables as the wear and tear. So you're asking for the city to basically donate the tables and chairs?
No, sir. We'll borrow them temporarily until we can afford our own. I'm not sure why you're making everything so difficult.
Okay, what else?
That's it.
Okay, so what you're looking for is a change of the hours and you want to ask them to bring somebody in and then let them go and come back? And you want the city to loan the tables and chairs? For how long?
Oh, it's like three months.
And the other things that you wrote were about money, getting more money? Is that off the table now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And you also wrote about the location? Is that off the table now?
Well, I know it's something that it's not going to be considered.
Okay. All right.
Nancy?
So I'm going to...
Nancy has her hand up.
Yeah, and go ahead, Ms. Kane.
When we bring an employee in, it's a minimum of two hours at a time.
Okay, that's still fine, too. That's still less than six hours.
So you're going to send them away for one hour and have them come back for two hours? To save an hour's worth of labor on that employee?
Save two hours, well, depending.
Okay.
Well, then maybe we don't, then maybe we ask for seed money. I mean, I'm not truly, I'm not sure why I've got to beg, borrow.
And you're not begging and borrowing. I know you, that's what you think's going on right now, but the problem is, is I'm sitting here with, in the minutes, what council approved and watching what's happening and they're not the same thing. And I, I told you, that's a problem. And so you, I'm asking you to understand that council made the decision on this, seeded this for three months, said that it was going to be self-sufficient and now we're moving this target. I'm just holding the line on what council said. Now, council's here and that's why we're talking about it here and if they want to change, change this, it's their prerogative and I have no vote in this. But it is a problem to spend money that the council has not approved. It's a problem to advertise a change in a city activity that the council did not approve. And that's why you're perceiving it as being difficult, but I'm just telling you that we need to stick with what y'all, you're part of it, decide.
Well, our interpretation of things are slightly different.
Okay. Ma'am? Oh, and the other thing that I will tell you that I don't know if it's been brought to your attention, but this next... but this next market is, and this is not my declaration, but this next market is the last time that Kat's gonna be working it.
I'm rather aware of that.
Which is significant, because she's, she has spent a lot of time. She's actually spent more time on it recently than she did when the city was running it, so...
Correct, 'cause she's trying to get our person that we hired up to speed. And if I recall, um, you and Nancy both have governance over the market as well. And I seem to be doing the majority of the work, and getting the majority of the, uh, shall we say, grief? I don't know. I mean, for the hundred things we do right, you've, again, once again, called me on the carpet for doing two things wrong that I told you in advance I was gonna address up here.
Okay.
But you decided that you needed a public forum.
No, it's not about a public forum. It's about the forum with these, with-
Right, and I told you I was gonna address it.
Your four peers.
Right.
Okay. So what do you want council to approve?
I would like council to take the one hundred dollar expenditure off of the mark, for tables and chairs, off of the market budget.
For the next three months, the community center will provide tables and chairs? Is that what you're asking for?
Correct.
Okay, that's the first thing?
I would like to extend the market hours temporarily, or at least on a trial basis, until two o'clock.
Okay, 2:00 PM extension. Okay, and anything else?
I'd like to consider some seed money for the market.
So you want the council to appropriate more money to the market?
What do you need, more money?
More money. We've spent, how many thousands of dollars on the market already? So it is more, yes ma'am?
Not since she's been running it.
No, not since we've been running it. Not since I've been running it. We didn't spend that thirty-five hundred that was allocated. The only money that was spent out of that was on, um...
Okay, so how much money do you want?
It was on, the only money that was spent out of that was labor. That thirty-five hundred dollars was just spent on labor.
How much money do you want?
Uh, five hundred dollars.
Okay. Council, there you have it. You have tables and chairs for three months from...
You can suggest it.
You can say, you can say anything you want. You're the ones that are making the decision, so...
Okay, I move that we approve a thousand dollars for seed money for the, uh, market days. Um, also that we allow them, I guess, to use tables and chairs for a certain amount of time, and that the hours be increased by one hour on a Saturday. Also, okay, that's a motion.
Okay, so motion, tables and chairs for how long? Look, this is, I know this seems to be trivial, but if you're the one that has that other part of the city, and your stuff is being used and torn up, and you have no recourse, because now you've just gotta replace it out of your budget. I'm, in essence, I guess what I'm saying is I'm trying to, um...
Do you charge the Parks Committee for use?
The Parks Committee buys most of the stuff that they use.
Do you, the Parks, the Parks, the tables and chairs?
So, it's, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, how long do you want?
Three months?
Three months.
Three months, okay. And this is a city function, Mayor. This is not some community organization that's gonna be using these things.
Okay. So I have a motion from Place Three to use the tables and chairs at no cost for three months, to extend the hours to 2:00 PM, and to, uh, um, put a thousand dollars more, a thousand dollars, whether it's more or not, a thousand dollars to the market days. Uh, where would you like that money to come from?
We could reduce the cost of trap hogs by a thousand dollars, and put nine thousand dollars on it. We could take it from there. I don't care where it comes from. We certainly have it somewhere.
All right, motion for Place Three, you heard it. Anybody wanna do a second?
I'll second.
Place One with a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Yes, if I may, uh, do we, I've been there, and I've volunteered, as you know, on this project. Um, the staff, aside from Kat, for example, but the guys, the public works guys, they come and they physically bring out the tents, or the, and so that's essentially what they're doing. And they retreat on that at the end of the session, is that right? So, there, I guess there's no option for volunteers to disassemble it, because we wouldn't have access to storage, is that right, probably?
It's usually temporarily stored in that area.
The smoking room?
Right.
Okay.
Right. I mean, we could have volunteers to tear it down if we didn't wanna bring somebody back.
Possibly a consideration, and I'd be happy to help with that to the degree that I can. Um, also, do you know how, I mean, I know you know, how many chairs and tables do you use each month so far, or have you, I wanna know?
Uh, it's like four or five tables. It depends on what we've got going on. If we have face painting, or if we set up the information booth, it just depends.
Well, Jim and I could, would be willing to donate some tables, I'd have to figure out.
I've got tables that are, my table that's in use right now as well, so thank you for that.
Um, if we own our own tables, where might we store them? I mean, if, in other words, if, as an entity, although it's a city entity, you know, um, we are able to underwrite, or ultimately purchase tables, where would we store those, so they don't get messed up with community center issues?
Everything for the farmer's market is being stored on the back patio behind admin.
Okay. Okay. Um, I'm sorry, I think that's all I had as questions right now. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Motion Place Three, second Place One. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is unanimous. Moving on, item 10D.
Can I say something?
Out.
About the...
Yes.
Okay. My attempt to keep the discussion a little bit on track with the agenda was a complete failure. I'm sorry about that. Um, Kim and Councilman Swinton, your efforts last month were incredible. That was one of the best we've ever had, and I'm sure it'll continue to be like that. But we did have two items on this agenda that we were supposed to be following. And one was discuss the status and monthly activity. The second was to make the motion we just made. And that was it. So don't, please don't take this personally.
Moving on, item 10D, ordinance 22072019. Um, this is, this is an interesting situation, because the Austin Materials has asked us to change our ordinance to allow their trucks to drive the route that is, if you put that, that part up, it's the one that, yeah, there you go, and just roll it down, to drive this route. Uh, you approved tonight, in the consent agenda, the minutes where you, council, stated that you would do this, but that Austin Materials would have to, in writing, agree to be responsible for the maintain, the maintenance and upkeep of the road. Well, um, going back and forth with them, they're now to the point where they're saying, oh yeah, we'll take care of it, but they're not willing to put it in writing. So what's coming to you is, do you want to, uh, do you want to approve this without it being in writing? And I know that council, Councilman Lancy has a little bit of background in it, so I'd like to hand this over to him.
Did, has anybody talked to them specifically about this?
I was under the impression that you had engaged conversation with them.
The mayor suggested that, that they have refused to put this in writing, or whatever. They have done that. They would cooperate, and they've told me this on several occasions. They would cooperate with the surrounding industrial properties to maintain that road if it gets to the point where it needs it. They absolutely will not put it in writing, and I brought this up, both times I've brought this up to council. This is not part of their agreement. What they wanna do is they want to use six-tenths of a mile within our city limits to allow their trucks to come from their plant to the exit of Hanson Materials, take a left, and go straight to 35. That's all they're asking for. So there's no maintenance agreement here. The only agreement they have actually put in writing is they put out that they will fire anybody that goes anywhere else except that route. And we're only talking about six-tenths of a mile through the city limits. That's all they're asking for. Once it turns onto 2250, that's a state highway.
So also to rewind in the discussion, one of the things we talked about is that their driving on that road will tear up the road more. Uh, and so they were agreeing that they would maintain, uh, that road, and take care of that road. But the issue is, they're not willing to put it in writing. So for council, hang on, hang on a second. So for council, it's just up to y'all. Do you want to, do you, do you want to take, take this, adjust, and modify ordinance 22, and accept that without it in writing, and move on? Or do you want to insist that they put it in writing? It's up to y'all. Go ahead.
Um, they are already authorized by law to go from their plant to Hanson to pick up material, and back to their plant. They already use this road. In fact, the road that they're gonna be using is probably gonna be about two-tenths of a mile that they're not actually using at this point. So any tearing up of the road is already taking place that, I mean, there's Hanson trucks going up and down that road all the time. It's not gonna accelerate it that much more. Um, all it's gonna do is keep them from going through the old Comel community, and on past the intermediate school. That's what they're trying to eliminate. And they will not be signing an agreement for maintenance of the road.
Okay.
They will cooperate, but they're not gonna sign it.
I'm not advocating for or against this, I'm just stating the facts. Facts are that they're not signing it in the, in the minutes. It said that we were, we were going to them to ask and to sign it, and that's what, that was what was affirmed by council. So, sign, not sign, two-tenths, it doesn't, it's all, it's all on the table right now for y'all to make a decision on. So, um, again, this is, I changed ordinance 22. And what's the will of the council? Ma'am?
Can we ask, for what it's worth, a legal opinion as to, you know, if there's an incident? I mean, I don't understand why they won't put it in writing. Makes me a little nervous.
Councilwoman Bauer, this-
Hang on a second, hang on a second. Legal, do you have anything to say about this?
Um, so I can't answer Councilwoman Bauer's question as to why they wouldn't wanna put that in writing, but what I can say is that there are legal mechanisms, is if they do agree, with which, you know, we can legitimately create an agreement for maintenance of that road. So there are some options there, of course. An agreement implies that the other person on the other side is in agreement, is in agreement to that. And what I'm hearing, though, is that they're not willing to do so. So...
Councilman Lancy, go ahead.
There's other industrial properties using that road, that six-tenths of a mile. Um, the brick plant uses it, Hanson uses it. Are we gonna get an agreement from everybody? Legal?
So the answer is, that is normally how it's done, is that whoever the users of the road are, um, are worked into a sort of an assessment type of agreement, so that they pair, pay a share of the upkeep and maintenance.
Well, then, we might as well table this for another six months, so we get that agreement going. I don't know what else to do.
Sir, I, I am not trying to quarrel, I'm merely asking, this is, this is an isolated segment, and to be honest, I don't remember where it came from in terms of, I mean, I know it's been on the agenda, okay? But why are we singling them out if everyone is using it? So I, is it sort of a moot point? I'm, perhaps I'm lost.
Go ahead and explain.
Okay, I, I have no loyalty to these people whatsoever. The plant manager called me up, he said, Brian, he said, our current route that we take goes through Old Town Comel, goes either past the new intermediate school, or it goes back, and we have, we have that, that picture I had before. It's a large triangle that goes right back to 2252, right before I-35. He said, can you see if we can actually go legally from our plant to 2252, and take a left and go to 35 instead of this, this other route? And I said, I'll try. I don't care if we drop this right now, and I never talk to the man again. It makes no difference to me. I'm just trying to protect the school, I'm trying to protect the Old Town, Old Town area in Comel, and it only makes sense that they are allowed to drive an additional six-tenths, or a two-tenths through the city limits, that's in an industrial area anyhow, to get to 2252 and straight to 35. That's where I'm, that's where I'm at, it makes no difference to me.
Okay, so it's essentially the lesser of however many evils. And do we have any input from PD? Yes, no?
Go ahead, Chee, please.
I was originally the one that suggested that we try to get them to maintain it. That is a well-traveled industrial road. It's up to the council on what's the council, what the council wants to do. That road is, is getting torn up, but as Councilman Lancy said, they can already use it to go in and out of the plant, and go back and forth, haul in the aggregate, back and forth. So I don't know what the increase truck traffic would be. That would not be going into Hanson. Don't know if it's, if it's worth it or not. Don't know if it's worth, uh, talking to Hanson and them trying to get something. Uh, I was just making a recommendation, trying to look out for the city's best interest on a road that's gonna cost a considerable amount of money to fix.
Go ahead.
They're already using it. Um, I'll put my dad hat on and go, the truck traffic that goes in front of Danville Middle School, driving that triangle that Councilman Lancy mentioned, is hideous and causes traffic problems, because they're trying to turn left, uh, off of 42, or whatever that road is that goes by, in front of the middle, the intermediate, the middle school, uh, with all the truck traffic already coming out 2252. Um, I think it would greatly benefit the parents that are driving their kids to and from the middle school to allow this. Um, the, one of the questions I've got is, is how many Garden Ridge citizens live on that six-tenth stretch of road? None. There's no impact on any residents. So if that road got tore to crap by all these heavy trucks going on it, and we didn't fix it, what happens to us? It doesn't impact our citizens, the only people that get impacted are the businesses that are there, and it's in their vested interest to fix it. Um, if we're not obligated to fix it when they tear it up, I'm not really worried about a written agreement on their part to fix it. It'll become self-critiquing if they don't wanna fix it, and they're tearing axles out of their trucks, 'cause the road's bad, and we don't have to fix it. Cutting down on the truck traffic that goes into the Old Camel Settlement, it also goes in front of, I believe, the, what was Camel Elementary School, now is Pope John Paul, or something, the Catholic school that's there. So you're having truck traffic going through another school zone, versus you'd cut that out by having it go this way. I guess I'm trying to give reasons in my mind why this is a good idea, and I can't come up with a reason why it's a bad idea if it doesn't impact any citizens. So there's my thoughts.
That's what I thought, Councilman, and it just, it was common sense. Um, they're not gonna do us any harm whatsoever. And they're already using that even to go to 2252. The day this plant manager called me, I drove towards the plant, I counted six trucks coming out of their, their site. Went straight to 2252. They just don't wanna be ticketed from now on. But they use it all the time.
Anyone else?
I'm done.
Okay, so what do you wanna do?
I say for the welfare of the children, and the parents, and so on, um, we give it a try, and possibly consider down the line if, if there is an issue. The fact that they reached out, I know it's to their benefit, but it sounds to me like with input from parents and so on, that possibly it's safer, safer to allow it.
So to be clear, what is your motion?
My motion...
You're, you're looking to accept, give them exception to ordinance 22? Is that what you're asking, you're saying?
As an exception, I wouldn't, we don't, is it necessary to rewrite the ordinance?
Well, we, we have to revise the ordinance be-
To amend it, to allow?
Right, to allow.
Specific, specific companies?
Right, 'cause we have to rescind the change that put this into place.
I'm, I'm...
Right. So only an ordinance can change an ordinance. So if we're going to do anything to allow them to drive that, we either need to rescind the previous amendment, or write in some other change within the ordinance to make that happen.
Right, so not to specify companies per se, but to allow commercial tractor-trailer traffic. That would be my motion.
Say it again?
I recommend we amend the ordinance to include to allow, uh, cor- I recommend we amend the ordinance to include to allow a commercial class, whatever it is, tractor-trailer travel. And it's not necessarily tractor-trailer. Pardon me? Okay, commercial truck traffic on that specific route.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a motion, place five. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, place four. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 10E, ordinance 217-012019. This is the sex offender ordinance, and we received a petition that somebody says that they, they believe they're, they're an exception to the ordinance, and they want to be able to be accepted. You received a discussion, you received the note from the petitioner, and you received a legal opinion and discussion from our attorney. So I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Trevino to explain.
In analyzing the ordinance and based on the information contained within the petition, we find that the petitioner does not meet any of the written exemptions that are contained within the ordinance. There is one provision within the ordinance, section nine, that allows council to grant an ordinance or an exception to the ordinance if it so chooses to. However, that granting is limited. It is limited by the fact that the council can either do it on their, on authority, but based on an independent analysis or an independent risk analysis done for that particular offender. And to my knowledge, the city hasn't, the petition was not accompanied with any type of independent analysis of risk for this particular offender. So based on that, the council doesn't meet the threshold to grant an exception under its own authority without meeting those particular parameters of the ordinance.
So put in plain English, this petitioner is saying that they have an exception, and legally that exception does not, is not met flat out. That's basically what it comes down to. So questions, comments, and questions for our attorney, starting on the right side.
I, I'm inclined just to do nothing because I don't want to change it.
If, if I will, the way that the ordinance is written, council is required to take and document an action in the, in the minutes. So, I mean, it can be as simple as the motion to say, we find no exception and deny.
Ma'am? Sir?
We do exceptions and variances on a regular basis. We shouldn't be doing those, but we do. This is one line that we're going to draw, I'm going to draw and say absolutely not.
Sir? Ma'am?
Would you like a motion?
Your thoughts on the motion, yes?
My thoughts are, based on legal advice, we do not accept the request.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to deny the request for exemption from our ordinance 22-072019, based on legal advice. That there's no justification.
Thank you. Have a motion to deny this petition. Can I get a second?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, did she read the wrong ordinance? I didn't even catch that.
Oh, that's the street, that's regulating the traffic. I'm sorry.
I didn't even catch that.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you for catching that. So it's ordinance 217.
Yes. I'd like to amend my amendment to state ordinance, I don't care about the traffic, ordinance 217-012019, please.
Okay. So place five has, has made a motion to deny the petition for the exception of ordinance 217. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
And I have place four with a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Yes, I'd like to thank the chief for hearing the rocks in his head and go back and forth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trevino. Okay, moving on to item 11. Update. City Minister reports, update on CIP.
We have completed all renovations in the park, community center, municipal parkway restriping. The only thing we have outstanding is payment of the drainage property, project associated with Beinzel Lane, and some outstanding engineering fees that would be associated with that project as well. So we are almost completed all of our projects.
And as we heard from our engineer, we're getting close to having that, the, the conditions, the vegetation and all satisfied. And that was kind of, we're holding back the money for the vegetation. So as soon as that's done, and possibly a little bit of outstanding engineering fees, we'll finally be able to put that CIP down for good. An update on city use of password management. City Secretary.
So I know I had originally said we were going to try to do implementation and training sessions at the last week of October, but early voting kind of sprung upon us that we had not thought about. So we were not able to use this room. So we're still looking at dates, but I don't have anybody on council that has created their account yet. So make sure that you are, received the email. I need to make sure that everybody got the email. I know I've talked to a couple of y'all that has had questions, so I know those have got the email. But if you haven't received the email with the invitation, please let me know so I can resend it. And then when you, you need to create an account. It's pretty easy, but if you have questions, feel free to ask myself or Kat. She knows how to do it as well.
Any questions for our city secretary? Comments? Okay, thank you very much. Item 11B, the communication report. If you're, if you happen to notice, the electronic sign is, has been removed. The electronic sign, it hasn't worked for a while. That would have cost us a fortune to fix. We've finally removed it. Also, another communication thing is the consent agenda. And I just want to, I want to poll council and make sure that everybody is, is in agreement with the intention to put non-controversial things out there, give you lots of time to look at it, ask questions of staff, but then to make these meetings, try to make these meetings shorter by being able to do that. Again, I'm well aware that it may be, maybe, somebody may think, oh, you don't want to talk about it in public. But we still, people will be able to read these packages well ahead of time. They'll always be able to poll you or myself, what's going on, what are we doing about this, that, or the other, even before the, the decisions are made. And in any time, anything becomes controversial in your mind, you can let staff know ahead of time, and we'll pull it off the consent agenda. And of course, you can always do it in the meeting, too. So any questions or comments on that action? Because it is, we're moving forward with that, sir?
No, I'm very much in favor of it. And just like you said, after reading them, there was nothing I really wanted to go over. So we still have that opportunity if necessary.
Great. Thank you. Ma'am? Sir?
I love the idea because it's three minutes to nine, and we've still got a bunch of work left to do.
Yes, we do.
I like it, and I think this time it seemed that we had more supportive backup or more clarification maybe in our backup.
Yes.
That helped.
Yes. And, and, and thank staff for that. You know, some of the stuff in there, I'll say, like from the PD, great background, great explanation. But again, if you look at it and you're not getting what you need, we're going to send this to you early enough that you have enough time to come back to staff and, and get questions answered, and we can republish to all of you more of the information or anything you need. So we'll make sure it happens. Okay, good. Thank you. You got something? Citizen contact report. We got a couple of things want to let you know about. You know, we've done a lot of the work on Sumac Circle with drainage. And we had a neighbor of the, the lot that we did all the work on say, okay, you've done all this work, and how, how is this not going to affect me? Which is logical and a very good question. So our, 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 our city administrator spent considerable time explaining to these folks what was done and that we would, we would keep a, a close eye on it, and connected these folks also with Public Works and Mr. Steimets. So they are satisfied that, that we've done what we could do, as well as we're going to keep track of it and keep watch of it to make sure that, that we haven't forgotten them. So that's, that's great work on both Public Works and admin, or, or our city administrators thing. And I think we, we have them to thank for that. We had some issues with some pothole, and pothole, and then also it's kind of the side of the road that was eroding, bin seal and also on Batcave. For those of you keeping track, Batcave isn't even our road, but because we're always trying to help, our Public Works even repaired a piece of Batcave and let, let our county folks know that we did that because it was a hazard to our, our citizens. But also repaired pothole on bin seal. And that came from a coffee, a coffee with the mayor discussion where somebody brought that in and said, hey, we got some problems with this. And then another one that was a coffee with the mayor thing was the drainage ditch. It's on 2252, which is actually Tech Dot's area. But it has an effect on our MS4. You know, Mr. Steimets spent considerable time putting together the answers in the report to satisfy the federal and state requirements for MS4. And we are, that's why we, you see more things on the sign about, about, about MS4 types of issues. But also, he is working with Tech Dot to, to clean that out because it does have a direct effect on, on the flow in, into our area. So something that Public Works kind of over, over and above again. So two, two over and aboves with Public Works on some contact with citizens. So thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of those? City facility update, the audiovisual upgrades and streaming. Hand it over to city secretary, Marissa.
So we are now streaming all of the commission meetings that started in October. They are all going to the YouTube channel, or the city's YouTube channel. And for Civic Clerk, which is the software portal where you can see the indexing of the agenda to the video, they are working on integrating all of what we currently have on our Agenda Center on the website into their portal, which they should have done probably next week when we meet with them again. So if our meeting was a little later, we would have it in November. But we will definitely have that available to the public at our December meeting. They'll be able to view the meeting live from the city's website, council meeting. And then after the fact, they will be able to see the bookmarks. Obviously, the bookmarks aren't available. If you're watching the live video, they're not available until after the meeting. But that will for sure be done, the December council meeting. They'll be able to watch that.
And that, that's a, that's great progress. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Marissa on that? Okay. Ordinance revision process, we're working zoning buildings and water, as, as you know, and then parks. As soon as we finish the, the work around the, the new pavilion, we'll then work that pavilion into the parks ordinance as well. Tech Dot coordination, if you recall, Tech Dot told me that the speed limit on 20, or in 3009 would be changed in October. And if you've driven on 3009, you see that it has not changed. A lot of people were telling me that, they kept asking me throughout October why it hasn't happened. And I figured if the minimum wasn't good enough, it wouldn't be the minimum. So I waited until November 1st and called, and I have no answer yet. They haven't answered me. They don't know, they don't know what's going on. So I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. But as it stands right now, I'm waiting for a call back from, from the point of contact on that. So no change in the speed limit yet. Number six, Garden Ridge Elementary School traffic flow and 3009 safety. The traffic flow with 3009, or excuse me, with Garden Ridge Elementary School has, has obviously improved tremendously with them allowing two lanes going in there. The issue, though, is we now have just traffic during that time, increased traffic on 3009. Makes it really difficult for somebody that lives in Trophy Oaks to get out of their neighborhood. And, and it queues back quite a ways. And when I get the answer from Tech Dot, the next, our next thing is, we're going to ask them if there's any way they can look at making more of a turn lane going into, into municipal parkway. Some people are creating a turn lane. I was educated that as long as they stay on blacktop, they're not breaking the law. If they go into the dirt to, to create a turn lane, they're now breaking the law. But, so we've got a mixed bag of some people that are doing both. But it's still not, it's not an ideal situation. We're addressing, we're addressing that with them. So we'll see. But 3009 continues to be an issue with, with traffic, particularly at those, those peak hours. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
They're going out of their way to increase the size of the road in front of the new high school.
Yeah.
They're making every effort to do that, but they're not going to help us a bit.
Anything else? Okay, city council projects, new resident package. We've got Councilwoman Swint and Bauer on that. Any updates on that?
Well, we've, we're slowly but surely, but maybe not surely, moving along. I, we did ask for input from staff as to ideas that they might have to expand it, the documentation that you gave me earlier. And we all feel like, or they've all expressed the thought that they actually like the interaction with citizens, whether they be new citizens or current citizens and so on. So they, they actually like the face-to-face. So it would suggest that possibly we create a PDF file with a link to our city website, but also the availability of texting or emailing new residents as, as well for information. So it's not to exclude the paper, the paper version for those who aren't electronically, you know, inclined. But it's, it remains sort of a work in progress, and I don't know that we're going to get anything done in December or November, for that matter.
Thanks for the work you've done on it. Do you want it to stay on here, or do you want it to come off and come back on when you want it to come back on? What's your choice?
Let's take it off for December, please. And, 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 sorry, I don't have my mic on. Take it off for December, and we'll readdress in January.
Got it.
Thanks.
Link to the city council meeting is number, number two on here, and it's Councilman Lancy. Go ahead.
If it is agreeable to Councilman Bauer, it is agreeable to Councilman Swint and myself to take 11C and move the entire thing to next month. We have a lot to cover before the end of this evening.
Okay. Well, it's just two items left. So, so you, so you want to move this, you want to defer till next month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the three of us are agreeable.
Well, I don't understand. Number two is just yours.
Mayor.
We've already done number one.
We've got three? Okay. Okay, I want, I want mine to move to that next month, then. How's that?
That sounds great. Thank you. And number three is Councilwoman Bauer.
Mine is very brief. I, I have no answers to the comments I made last month regarding pets. One little anecdotal thing, again, I address cats. I'm not an anti-cat person. Please understand. But since that meeting, I was alerted by a neighbor that that black cat that we have seen in our neighborhood that continues to enter my yard and her yard attacked her cat. Her cat became sick and died. We cannot catch that cat, and that's an example of somebody being irresponsible, whether they let that cat go or whatever. I've tried everything in my power, and it came very close to one of my dogs catching that cat. And if that cat is sick and makes my dog sick, there's going to be a whole nother issue. So I just beg you people, please try. Help everybody else out. I also found dog poop in my- ... front yard, and it's not from my dogs. That tells me there's a dog running loose now, too. But please, just let's everybody try. Because now if it's becoming an issue with contaminated animals contaminating other people in other people's yards, I came, that cat came very close to losing its life if I had not intervened at the, at the very last minute with one of my dogs. And it would not be my dog's fault. So I just beg you, please, people, let's, let's really try. Thank you. That's it.
And all I'd, all I'd add is, have you called animal control on it?
No, I did not because Mr. Lowman was out of commission. I didn't feel like it was in, I haven't seen the cat.
Please consider call, because it'll also be a, a record of this being a continual occurrence.
I will.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 12, discussion for future agenda, agenda items. I'll start on the left side. Do you have anything for future agenda items?
No.
Sir?
Not this side? No.
Okay. None for anyone. Okay. Item number 13, citizen comments. I got a hand up, but hang on a second. So I want to address citizens' comments because apparently there's, there's a rumor going around that people can speak in the council meeting anytime they want. That's not what the law says. It's never said that, and it doesn't say that now. What it says is that citizens will be given, in fact, I have it here- now. What it says is that citizens will be given, in fact, I have it here, but cities, governmental bodies may adopt reasonable rules regarding public right to access, address the body under this section. And it, we can limit the amount of time, which we do, which apparently some people don't, don't agree with, but it's pretty standard practice in the state of Texas. And it says, "To address body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration." That's why we have a public comment period, counsel, before we start all this. So, and, and our intent has always been that you look at the agenda, you know you want to talk about something on the agenda, you get your three minutes before the meeting to talk, before we discuss it, for you to discuss it. But then, we also, for those that may not know, they wanted to talk about something until they heard the proceedings during the council meeting, we have this citizen comment period at the end. So, I can assure you that we not only comply with the law, but we exceed the requirements of the law by having this second citizen comment period at the end. We have, we have consulted with our attorney, who also represents a lot of other cities around here, and we are absolutely in line with the law and with other cities. Nobody, nobody has ever read this, that people can, in the middle of, of y'all talking, can raise their hand and say, "I want to speak on this." And there was also a question of why we did not bring up House Bill 2840, and it was merely because it was not applicable. We already comply with, with Section 1, Subchapter A, 551 of the government code. And so, there was no reason to ever talk about it. But apparently, there was, because it's, there's been lots of, lots of discussion, including in here, about, about us not allowing people to speak. So, that said, this is the one you don't have to sign up for. You get two minutes. When you come up to speak, name and address doesn't count to your two minutes. And when you're done, would you please go over to our city secretary to sign in? And come on up, anyone.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kirk Carter. I'm a Garden Ridge resident for the last 13 years. I live at 21911 Paseo Court. I just wanted to say first, thank you for addressing, or at least, in my opinion, beginning to address, the feral hog problem. I would like to put a face on that. If you don't know anybody that has had their property damaged by a feral hog, you're looking at one. And at this point in time, I'd just like to start these.
Sir, let me, let me, let me say, you, actually, you got to give it to our city secretary, and then she'll make sure that everybody gets to see it.
No problem. Anyway, I just wanted to say thanks for, I think the trapping is good. We are Board of Directors, George Ranch provided us an opportunity to hear from a Texas wildlife expert earlier in this week. And there's many, obviously, avenues for fighting the feral hog problem, or addressing the feral hog problem. I would just like for you to consider that, you know, you kind of scoffed at the hunting aspect of the feral hog problem and the city limits, and I know there are some legal issues there. But it is not without precedent in the state of Texas for urban hunting to be allowed. The city of Longview has done that. Longview is a much larger city than the city of Garden Ridge. I just say, that's, you know, laws are passed by men, and men can change those laws, or amend them for the rec, for, for the, for the good of the subdivision. I just think, you know, we, we are at a point where this is going to become a larger problem if we don't be proactive about it. And, you know, we have nice welcome packets that we want to give to our new residents, but it will be hard to find new residents to purchase homes that are for sale in, in, in Garden Ridge if they drive through our communities and see the kind of damage that was done to my yard. And my yard is by no means the worst yard that has been damaged in George Ranch. And my damage was $3,200 worth, for the, just the pictures that you see there. So, we are not talking inconsequential dollars.
Thank you, sir. And, and for the record, if anybody was watching the clock, and it went to zero, and I didn't stop him, the reason why is because when he was giving his name and address, for some reason, we started the clock. So, I, I counted the 10 seconds that we took from him, and put it at the end. So, that's why, in case you're wondering. Anyone else?
Hi, Tracy Blackwell, 9745.
On the mic, please.
There you go.
Thank you.
Is it on now?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, the time hasn't started. Tracy Blackwell, 9745 Trophy Oaks. I wanted to address the city engineer, as he said that he's been working with T. Blackwell Insurance since February. I didn't purchase the property until May 15th. That was my closing date. If you recall, I did have another lot that I was looking at, that I had to walk away from because of city planning and zoning. I've been very patient, and I've been working with everybody trying to get this done, and I haven't even spoke. Last time, whoever represented the city engineer, they said that they were working with T. Blackwell, because they had all these variance requests. When I asked him in the hallway exactly how many variance requests I had, he said, "Oh, I don't know. They just have me come talk, and I don't know." I said, "Well, you misspoke," because I didn't ask for a ton of variance requests. But my architect is, used to be on planning and zoning in the city of Garden Ridge, Sean Willis, and he actually was on planning and zoning for four years. I specifically picked him, Clyde Marbach Friesenhahn, to do the building, because they have built in Garden Ridge, they know the laws, they know what have you. And recently, and this is from Sean, "Our civil engineer," let me back up. "I have to say, I'm very frustrated with the process and concerned of our future development of city of Garden Ridge. This process has been dragged out due to the fact that the city engineer is not able to perform that work in timely or competent manner. We have recently discovered that reviewing the engineer, the plans is based out of Arizona, not DuBompels, Arizona, and is not familiar with the local and area standards for designing stormwater detention and septic. Our civil engineer is very experienced in what is required, and is very thorough, to make sure the system and designs are in compliance with state and local standards, and not to be detriment to neighboring properties. He and I both take offense to the city engineer's comments that we consider them to be out of line. The last review cost me, and still is costing me money. I need to be out of the place where I'm at. I need to move on. I need the city engineer to work and explain exactly what we need upfront, and not a bunch of rework."
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yeah, there you go. Nope, when the red light's on, it's on.
Are you guys, is she ready?
You are. Go, go right ahead.
Julie Rieger, I'm at 9015 Center of our Court. First of all, I just want to say thank you for what you guys do. My husband grew up in Garden Ridge when it was a small population. We've been here six years now, and it's a great place to live. We love it, and we're so glad to get to raise our daughter here. And I know the time and effort that you put in here, especially those who are volunteers, is a sacrifice in being away from your family. And I appreciate just everything you guys do to make this a great place to live. I want to advocate on behalf of residents of George Ranch. I, we have not had any feral hog issues, but I just wanted to say, we appreciate your efforts thus far, and would ask that you would continue to look at a multifaceted approach to treating the feral hogs in a proactive manner. The research and data does show that there is no one absolute best way and only way to treat feral hogs, but your effectiveness does increase if you attack it from a multiple, multiple venue, or in various ways. So, if you would consider other ways in addition to trapping. And then, to a comment that was made earlier today about, there's expected growth probably with the, as, as we can tend to have development in the area, feral hog attacks will continue and will only increase. So, I would ask that you guys would consider making a line item in the budget to proactively plan on dealing with the feral hog issue, rather than, and I'm new at this, so I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know everything about the budget, but I don't think it's a specific line item right now. And I believe that the problem is only going to increase. And for the protection of the quality of our life and, and the residents of all of Garden Ridge, we'd ask that you would look at that in the future.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Ken Kniper, 8891 Chantel Road. I, I am astounded by being reminded that you all are not giving citizens a, an opportunity to speak. I not only attend this meeting religiously, but I also attend school board meetings. And the people that are in the audience can only speak once at the school board, and that's prior to the meeting. And we need to address something on the, on the agenda, or something we find very near and dear to our hearts. So, you are giving every citizen an opportunity to speak. Saying you don't is totally, I don't know where they're, where they're coming from. When I was in the military, we said they listen to a latrine lawyer. There are a lot of them, I think, that live in our city. They think they work for an attorney, or they think they know the law, and they don't know the law. So, they need to get an education, that before they put something out in social media, or get their group to start attacking and questioning you, they really need to find out what the law really says. And I guess, I don't have a problem with them, other than the fact I love to be on their end of their, the love vote, their love nest. So, I'm sure I'll get some comments very shortly on Nextdoor about my, my participation tonight. But thank you for what you do, and thank you for what you have to put up with from a very small group. I like to refer to myself, I'm from the silent majority, the majority of people that vote in May for city council, and who have elected you all. So, you are, we are your majority. We don't come at the meetings and speak. We don't come to the coffee with the mayor in groups and speak. We come in small groups. But we will speak every, every May when it comes time to vote for you. Thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on once, twice. Okay, we'll move on to item number 14, reports, comments, Mayor and City Council members, starting over on the left side. And remember, it's just the things that are listed here, please.
Nothing.
Sir. Ma'am. Sir. Okay. We, the city council will now, we're on item number 15. City Council resets its opening and reconvening executive session. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551072, deliberation about real property, then 551071, consultation with attorney, then 551974, personnel matters in Section 551071, consultation with attorney if necessary. And then, item D is pursuant to Texas Government Code 551071, consultation with attorney. There's those four things on there. We're going to recess at 9:22, and at 9:30, we'll convene in there. And council, I'll ask you, that in the consent agenda, you approve the resolution, and the city secretary needs you to sign that, sign over there for the resolution. So, on your way over, or on your break, or whatever, if you would, help her out and get, get a signature on that. You'll see what, she'll show you what I'm talking about. Okay, we are, we are recessed and reconvened 9:30. Thank you. Everybody, we got a couple of pieces of business to do. Reconvening at 11:09. City Council session for 6 November is reconvening at 11:09. And item number 16, business item, City Council reconvene in regular session upon conclusion of the executive session and may recall any item. And ask council, do you have any, any actions you want to take based on our executive session?
Yeah.
Mike, please. Go ahead.
I move that we authorize the city administrator to execute documents for the transfer of land from one of our citizens to the Paul Davis Park project.
Okay. I have a motion from Place 1 to transfer some land from citizen to Paul Davis Park, and to authorize the city administrator to make that, to make that happen. And please give that, give the wording to city secretary afterwards. Can I get a second?
I second the motion.
I get a second from, from Place 5. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. And it should be noted that Council Place 2 left at, I don't know if you have it noted, but it's left at 9:30, 9:22. So, it's, everybody except Council Place 2. Okay, thank you. That is passed unanimously for the remaining. Any other actions that we, we need to take?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city engineer and city administrator to plan, engineer, and negotiate a pressurized sewer system line on 2252 for commercial use.
Okay, I have a motion from Place 3 to authorize the city engineer and city administrator to, to plan, engineer, and negotiate the pressurized sewer system on 2252 for commercial use. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got Place 3 with the motion, Place 4 with the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, unanimous. Any other business items from the regular, from the executive session? And I got all head, head shakes. That'd be a no. Next is item 17. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Place 3, the motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second, the motion to adjourn.
I get a motion, Place 5. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 11:12. Thank you very much, everyone.